Everyone, I'm going to call this meeting of the full City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. This meeting's being recorded and streamed live from Channel 15 and Zoom and the city's website. The clerk will call the roll.
Anderson Burgos? Bartley?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Givner?
Here.
Graney?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
McGrath Smith?
Here.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Here.
Macasio?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera? Sullivan?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
Thank you, everyone. All right, so no one's on Zoom. Counselor Rivera texted me, she's on her way. And Counselor Graney, your name was pulled first this evening, so you are the lucky first voter. And so with that, we will start the meeting. The first item on the agenda is public, well, there's no public hearing, so public comment. And just for folks that may be new, you, everyone has 90 seconds, a minute and a half, to state your comment. At one minute, I will awkwardly let you know that you're at one minute, and then you can continue for another 30 seconds. I'll let you know when you're at time. If there's folks that are tuning in on Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand function. I don't have my trusty administrative assistant here with me tonight, which is surprisingly making me nervous, so it's fine. So bear with me, I'm gonna do all of the things up here on this podium tonight. The first name on public comment is Jamie Clark, 35B O'Connor Ave. Please just state your name and your address for the public record, and then I will start the clock. Make sure that, it might not be on.
On the bottom.
There we go.
Jamie Clark, 35 O'Connor Avenue. I'm here to talk about, is possibly doing something about rent control in the city, because the prices of the rents are ridiculous. My son wanted to move out, and he couldn't find anything. So now he's living with two other people in a dump. You know, and where, in my building, it was just bought, and the new owner has gone up, some people it's 300, some people it's 350. So now it's 1450 for a two-bedroom, and 1350 for a one-bedroom. And even Section 8, their, their top is lower than that. So, something's gotta, something's gotta give, because, you know, there's gonna be more homeless people in Hoyoke, because the rents are crazy. 1,500 on Linden Street, and the place is a dump. Not mine, but that's where my son lives.
Hello, hello.
And it's 1,500, that's why there's three people living in it, but, and it's a dump. And I think it's ridiculous. These prices are too high. That's it.
Thank you, Jamie, good to see you.
All right, up next, I have Nancy Neve Capron, 72 Congress Ave.
Hi, my name is Nancy Capron, and I live at 72 Congress Ave, Apartment 1L, Hoyoke, Massachusetts. I'm here to speak about the real estate transfer fee proposed to generate income for an expansion of affordable housing. I do not view it as overly burdensome to Hoyoke homeowners. The fee is usually attached to the buyer, so it wouldn't be a burden to the seller. And about, my friend last year sold her home after only six years of ownership here in Hoyoke for $100,000 worth of profit. There will be no reversal of the demands for homes from outside interest here in Hoyoke. You know, a potential $5,000 increase on a sale of a house is not going to deter the upper-middle-class folks fleeing the conservative states, or the folks who are leaving major cities, including Boston, you know, from buying in Hoyoke. No, nothing is going to deter them. And the investor class is certainly not going to be deterred either. The potential for profit here is too enticing. Our fiscal watchdog, Counselor, is right when he says, "It's not fair the way that we fund our cities." The state and federal government should be more equitable in its funding of municipalities. I have suggested to him before, and I now encourage all of you to become advocates/activists, like the tenants that just spoke before me advocating for economic justice. So must you advocate for economic justice for Hoyoke. Nothing precludes you as City Councilors from engaging in advocacy, nothing prohibits you from galvanizing your bases, and in fact, as City Councilors, you have the power and obligation to engage in activism, petition the state and federal government for a more just funding formula, and I'll come with you.
Thank you. All right, up next, we have Jose Maldonado Velez, 75 Linden Street.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone, Jose Maldonado Velez, 75 Linden Street, Apartment 3. I am now the Hoyoke organizer for Neighbor to Neighbor. And since starting in this role, we are regularly receiving phone calls from residents asking if it's legal for a landlord to raise their rent close to $400, $500. And the idea that this is allowed should be criminal, and that's why they're asking if it's legal. Unfortunately, in this state, we don't have any cap on rent, so it is completely legal for landlords to raise rent as high as they want. The idea that hard-working individuals and families are being priced out of their homes is completely unacceptable. We understand that landlords have expenses, have responsibilities, and there are other landlords on, in here as well, but these drastic increases are disproportionate and just straight-up gouging our people in Hoyoke. This is the poorest community in the Commonwealth, and the fact that rents are going up $500 is ridiculous, ridiculous. Last year, so tonight I'm asking for two asks, or three asks. The first one is, last year Mayor Garcia made a commitment to building out an office of tenant protection, and I'm here tonight to ask y'all to make this happen. Our residents are being intimidated, lied to, pushed out of Hoyoke even tonight. Some residents were scared to come out here and speak about their situation. That's not, that should not be happening. I know it's, it'll take time to build it out, but at the very least, it will send a message to the landlords that we are here supporting the people that live in our city. And although we cannot change laws at the state level, a resolution or support of rent control, not as the long-term solution and what's gonna fix everything, but something that we need at this moment to figure out our housing crisis. I hope you can join me in a message to the landlord saying, "We're not going down without a fight." Thank y'all.
Thank you. On Zoom, I have one person with their hand raised. Jimmy, I think Hoyoke Media, my friends at Hoyoke Media will allow you the opportunity to take yourself off mute. Hi.
Hello.
Hi. Please state your name and address, we can hear you.
Oh, my name is Jaime Coto, I live at 49 Northbridge Street here in the city of Hoyoke, in a flat, and I wanna just talk about what the gentleman before me was talking about, the rent control situation. It is, I don't know how we've lost control of this, and how fast it's happened, but now I'm living through it, so now I'm finding out about it. And it's, I don't know how to adjust our City Council to be more involved, to get us the resources that we need to stay in our homes. I love living in a flat, this is where I wanna be. And I don't, any suggestions, you know, of help or anything? I'm more than happy to speak, or hear, or whatever you can guide me towards or assist me with, I'd be greatly appreciated. And that's all. My information again is jimmycoto16@comcast.net. Phone number is 413-735-3849, and I appreciate the counsel and this time that is given. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands being raised, so I think that covers it for public comment. Moving on.
Madam President?
Yes.
I guess we need a motion to take all these items off the table.
Second.
I'll move that we take all the items off the table that we had tabled from last meeting.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to take Items 1 through 37 off the table for the purposes of discussing and dispersing to committees. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, Item 1 on the table is, "The Committee on Development and Government Relations referred an order that the City Council accept the proposal, the revised proposal for 689 Main Street as described in the letter previously submitted as a communication to the City Council, recommended that the revised proposal be adopted." Counselor, well, Counselor Bartley, did your hand up?
Yeah, I can excuse myself out of conflict, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Bartley's recusing himself. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So in, in DGR, we had a discussion with the representative who was interested in having the reverter released from 689, 679 Main Street in order, so they're the new owners of the building, and they wanna install a climate-controlled storage facility. So, but basically, they were coming to us not quite about that storage facility, but to release the reverter so that they could either have no reverter or negotiate a new one with the city. So we sent that with the recommendation that the old reverter be released, and that the new proposal from the city be accepted.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jordan, and then Counselor Bacon.
I guess I just have, one, I wanna say thank you to whoever's coming in to actually get our permission on releases of reverts, so victory! I'll start off by just saying thank you, I'm glad we're taking a vote. And then number two, could you just sell us on why? Why should we vote yes? Why is this, as opposed to doing a change, or like, why should we do this? Thank you.
So, so it's a new owner of this building, and I guess the previous owner had a reverter to put in a business, so they can't actually even work on accepting a new reverter until we've released the old one. So this is actually, this is to free up the new owner to negotiate with the city. They have negotiated with the city, there were attachments about a new reverter, but they can't do something new until the old business is basically taken care of.
Do you, let me ask you, your opinion, do you feel comfortable? I'm sort of agnostic on it, but do you feel comfortable that we should do this before they come in with the alternative, the new one? Or should we swap them out?
They did come in with the new one.
So we're gonna be voting on the new one?
Yeah, the proposal was attached, and we talked about it in DGR. I think I probably have it here, it should be a.
Could you just go through the change, like it's gonna go from this to this?
More, yeah, if I can match up all these 10 numbers for the item here. So this was Item 5. So, it's a different business altogether, so the reverter, I, from what I understand, it was still a five-year reverter, but it looks like the representative that was in here.
Oh, there is, I just, for everyone's, there's someone here.
There is a representative here.
Oh, great, thank you.
I will entertain any motion.
Motion to suspend the rules to allow.
Maybe our esteemed guest to join us to explain maybe the difference between.
That would be great. Just a second. Okay. Motion to suspend the rules to allow the representative for the applicant to speak. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Counselor Bacon?
Can I just get my question in?
Yes.
Thanks. So I heard mention of a five-year reverter being potentially proposed, but I'm just interested in knowing how long it would be and how long they usually are. I remember them usually being two, but I'm just curious why it would be five. Thank you.
It may be none.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening. My name is Jennifer Shero, I'm an attorney of Bacon-Molson. I represent the applicant, Rich Kowalski, who is looking to buy the parcel at issue at 689. He's also purchasing the abutting parcel at 679. And so the project that we're contemplating is a large project that's going to encompass both parcels. And so it's a fully air-conditioned interior self-storage facility. I believe the drawings were submitted, they look really great, we can, you know, send them out again. So, the property is currently under a two-year reverter. So what happened for that is the property was owned by the city, and they, you entertained proposals, and the proposal that was submitted was for two years to do some sort of construction project. It matched the timeline, so the timelines within the reverter matched the project timelines. We're actually looking for a three-year reverter. That is how, you know, it's a larger project than the previous one, but we're still kind of anxious and ready, we've already gone before the planning board, to start the ball rolling. So, as I had presented at DGR, while it's not necessary, because my, my client is so committed to this project, he is absolutely willing to have a reverter again with the city, to show his commitment, show he's ready, he's gonna do this project, it's gonna be, you know, really great. The only other thing that's in the letter, so our proposal is for a three-year reverter with language in there that it's gonna be subordinate to a construction lender, because we need to get money in order to construct the project. We've been in contact with the city solicitor's office. I believe Attorney Bissonnet is on the Zoom, and it can confirm we've, we've been in communication. So we have the basic of the reverter clause outlined, and then upon the City Council's proposal, we'll finalize and get the language ready to send for, you know, submitted to the mayor's office. But this will simply allow us to work out the details, but the basic structure is the three years subordinate to the construction lender, but still in favor of the city should, you know, my client not meet the timelines.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. So the.
We should just explain what she said in our vote, Madam President. We should just make sure we're clear in the final vote that it's, we're swapping out the two-year reverter, and the council is approving it, subject to a three-year reverter subordinate to the construction loan.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second. All right, let's see if I got that. So, the motion is that the City Council is swapping out the initial reverter with the new reverter that is three years. So.
Subordinate to the construction loan.
Subordinate to the construction loan.
Which is reasonable.
All right, great.
Yep.
Uh, that's a roll call vote, right?
Um, Madam President?
Yes.
I would just note that they specifically asked to be released from the previous reverter.
Yep.
Okay, uh, yes, so this releases them from the previous reverter, and swaps it out with a new reverter that's for three years, subject to the approval of a construction loan. All right. The clerk will call the roll.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Macasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote of the body.
With that, you have approved that item. Item, thank you. Item number two, "The Committee on Development and Government Relations to whom was referred an order that the City Council approve an amendment to a Home Rule petition for the purpose of expanding the Center City liquor license area." Recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Givner?
Thank you, Madam President. So, we had Aaron Vega from Oped in to talk to us a bit about how there's been a desire to expand the liquor license area for downtown to, because the way the map was, it stopped kind of like right before the end of High Street, so this is a block going towards Linden, and this was, would expand that, it would expand the licenses to go to Linden Street. And these are different licenses, so if you have a, a business downtown in this area, and you wanna, you know, open a new business, but there aren't any liquor licenses in the city yet, if you happen to be in this district, you can still get a liquor license for a discounted rate, and it doesn't travel with your business, and it doesn't like, you can't hand it over to anyone else. So, it's pretty restrictive in that way, but it does allow new businesses to have a liquor license in an area where other people already have them. So, he mentioned that, you know, this is one of the ways we can have more economic development in the city, it's one of the tools we use to attract new businesses. And, yeah, I think it's a good approach, I mean, and it really, it doesn't extend the, the area that much. It's really just about a block, block and a half. So, that would just extend the existing liquor license area for the special licenses.
Thank you. Counselor Graney?
Just quickly through the chair.
Just make sure you're.
Counselor Givner, does this infringe on any residences?
I mean, I don't think so. It's in the retail areas of downtown, so a lot of the downtown buildings have a first-floor retail, and then the second, third, fourth floors might be apartments or offices, so this is already a mixed-use district. So, I don't think so. And if someone wanted to apply for, let's say, a nightclub license, they would have to apply for that separately. So this is specifically, it's geared more towards restaurants, but if someone wanted to use it for something else, I'm sure they'd have to go through a different process and, and, you know, apply for the appropriate permits.
Okay, 'cause I thought you mentioned Linden Street.
Oh yeah, it's not on Linden Street, it's just High Street to the end that hits Linden. So it's just covering that, that last block there.
That clarifies it, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McGrath Smith, and then Counselor Bartley.
Through the President to Counselor Givner, just a question around why the proposed boundaries are being asked for in the way they are? Why towards that direction, why not another direction? Why not, you know, in any other direction? Just what was the purpose of expanding in that particular way?
Well, there are some new restaurants on that end, so I'm sure that might have had something to do with it, and there's some new development. There is a map, I'm not sure, if Jeffrey were here, I would ask him to pull it up.
Above my pay grade, so.
But let me, it should be here, so I can explain it a little better, so, let's see. So, the existing map, and it doesn't have the street names that clear, but the existing map was from about Appleton to Dwight, and now it would expand all the way to, to Linden. Yeah. So it's, it's not a large district as it is. To Lyman, sorry. Yeah, you can cross that, it's been Lyman the whole time. But, so it starts at Appleton and kinda heads down High Street, and for some reason it ended, like, the one block before Lyman, but now it would just extend. I think it has a lot to do with, like, there's a new restaurant there, Carmelinas, and then there's some new building development, they have retail on the first floor, so who knows if there'll be restaurants going in there or not. But the Office of Planning and Economic Development thought it would be a good idea to expand it in this direction. Usually when they ask for things, they have something in mind, but it wasn't shared that any specific businesses were trying to come in.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak in strong favor of this, so I'll, the purpose of this is really for economic development, but it's also to try to entice more entrepreneurs to develop restaurants, and because you can't have, you have to have tableside service in order to get this license. It doesn't transfer, you can't sell it, you can only use it once you purchase for $10,000. The, the boundary lines should have concluded all the way to Lyman Street when we originally did this. I actually thought it did, but I was mistaken. And so this is really a correction of what should have happened 10 years ago. And it's really a, a great tool for, for, for the downtown area. I know there is, because this agenda is, I just, I'm confused by it, but there is, are other orders relative to expanding it beyond this, I think in some other sections of the city. But I, same, seems to me like that should probably go to committee, and so we can have a little deeper discussion. But we did discuss this pretty well in depth in, in committee, and I hope that, I'm sure most of us had a chance to watch, watch the tape if you weren't able to attend. So, in, in terms of where it is now, it's, the program's been more or less a disappointment, Madam Chair, because there's been 13, we have 13, I think there's three being used. The hope is that more will be, be used if we expand the district towards, towards the end of Lyman Street, because that seems to be more of an area that's prevalent for, and traditionally for having food service. And if that kick, kicks in, then let's see what happens with, with these additional orders that are hopefully coming forward. So, this is a chance to give, give entrepreneurs and restaurateurs a, a shot, and I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Rivera?
Thank you. I also am in support, just to kinda piggyback off of some of what's already been said. I understand, I think that's part of the TDI District 2 as well, and that kinda helps out with whomever may be trying to open a business in that area, got opportunities to probably apply to grants through the TDI. So, it helps add another layer of resource for whomever is trying to open a new business within there. Plus, we have property owners that are actually more focused on trying to, what do you call, fill the spaces, the storefronts that are there. And a, a way to do that is through this. So yeah, I kinda wanted to put that out there, I wanted to speak in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else seeing none? The order is recommended that the order be adopted, and if you vote yes, you're voting to amend the Home Rule petition for the expansion of the city's Center City liquor license area. The clerk will call the roll.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Macasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right, with that, you have approved that. Item number three is, "The Committee on Charter and Rules to whom was referred an order that the legal department clarify the meaning of senior member as related to City Council Rule 3B and 8D." This was considered. Yes.
Take up Items 3 and 4 as a package, please?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take up Items 3 and 4 as a package. Item 4 is, "The Committee on Charter and Rules to whom was referred an order from Attorney Kathleen Degnan, the legal opinion regarding the context of senior." Both have been considered complied with. Counselor McGrath?
This was effectively just to have in writing what our interpretation from our legal department was for senior member, because senior member is named several times, is having different roles in our rules for City Council. And we unanimously agreed to recommend that it be complied with, and their recommendation was similar to what many of us assumed, which was that it is the member with most years of service, and the years need not be consecutive.
Anyone else? Motion is that these are considered complied with. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Item 5, "Committee on Charter and Rules, that the City Council Rule 7B be amended to allow speakers during public comment to speak for up to three minutes. The current rule allows for up to 10 speakers to each speak for one and a half minutes." Counselor McGrath?
So this was a conversation initially, this came from, several members of the public have been naming over the years that they would love to see us expand the amount of time that we give to public comment. It's often uncomfortable for our president to be in the position of constantly cutting people off, telling them they're at time. Most people who come to us, who are speaking, are not professional speakers, and so often they are nervous, it might take them a minute to get going and get to their point, and they're being told, "You have 30 seconds." Most people who come to us who are speaking are not professional speakers, and so often they are nervous. It might take them a minute to get going and get to their point, and they're being told, you've 30 seconds left, right? And people sort of panic. So a thought was to to expand the amount of time, to allow people from the public to feel more comfortable when they come to speak to us, and to give them more time to, you know, to share their opinion. They they took the time out of their day to either come online or to come down to chambers, and it was an act of respect to consider expanding the time. In our conversation, we went back and forth, because our rules right now say that it is for 1.5 minutes and that up to 10 people, the first 10 that sign up can speak. And then, of course, it's up to the the president to decide if they want to suspend the rules along with the council to let more people speak. So we did talk about, do you say anything about that? Do you change that? Do you expand it to anyone who speaks can speak? Do you keep it at that current 10? Counselor Bartley made the point that honestly, we can suspend our rules at any point, right? And that is, that's the truth, that we have to hold on to that reality is even though we have these rules here, we can see that there's a reason why we want to hear more people. There's a reason why we can say we're going to suspend the rules to allow the next 10 speakers to speak for three minutes if we want to, or one particular person, hey, we're going to give you five minutes to really, you know, expound on this issue for us. We can do that. And that's just something that we need to remember. Our council president can't do that without us. We need to make those motions. And so if somebody wants to make a motion in order to suspend the rules at any point to allow someone more time to speak, they can do so. So that came up in that conversation as well. So just as a friendly reminder. And then we decided that we wanted to sort of meet it in the middle. So rather than three minutes, you know, the will of the body when we were speaking committee was to compromise and raise it to two, with the thought that sometimes we have lots of folks who show up. Sometimes it's only a few. But if you extend all the way up to three and you have, you know, 15-ish more people or more speak, that's a lot of time. And we've been trying to be more thoughtful about meeting efficiencies and ending at our 10:00 PM cap. That is new this cycle. So with that in mind, we decided that it might make sense to compromise and start in the middle, extend to two minutes, which was our recommendation, and then to see how that feels. There's nothing that prevents us from opening this issue again and considering extending it up to three minutes or two and a half at some point. But this became a place that the the body felt good about starting. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Greeney?
I think the two minute is reasonable. I'd like to move the question for brevity's sake.
Second. Okay, so motion has been made and seconded to move the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So with that.
And now we'll vote on that.
We'll vote on that now. And so the order is to amend Rule 7B to allow speakers during public comment for to speak for up to two minutes. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That has passed. Thank you all very much. Item six.
A motion to take up item six?
The Committee on Charter and Rules, to whom was referred an order that the City Council establish a rule that requires any resident running to fill a vacant City Council seat will need to obtain 50 signatures from eligible residents in order to be considered by the full City Council for appointment, that the committee gives leave to withdraw. Counselor McGrath Smith?
So this was a two to one leave to withdraw. I was the sole vote against, just on the principle that I think that if we are filling a seat from City Council, I thought I was intrigued by the concept of us asking people to go do a little bit of legwork and make sure there's some basis of support in your ward or across the city, if it's at large for your position. But I was open to hearing what other members of the committee said as well, and also members from the council who joined us, who just spoke to sometimes we're trying to fill these roles. And it's often not easy to fill the roles. We're asking folks to please step up and serve your committee, you know, your community. We know this is going to be hard. Please step in and fill this vacancy. And that it might be, you know, a disservice to the process to slow it down and require 50 signatures. And so the the body voted two to one to give it leave to withdraw.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes. And as part of the discussion, I'd also note, there would be nothing to stop a person who was interested in being chosen for the seat to go out and gather signatures. It would certainly be information that could be considered by the council. But the other practical point that had been raised in the discussion was when, in the regular order of things, we're running for a seat, we have a lot of time to get the signatures. And in the situation where we're filling an expired term, it's a very time shortened process. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on the motion, motion to give leave to withdraw. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. Item seven, the Committee on Charter and Rules, to whom was referred an order that the City of Hoyoke, through its council and mayor hereby petition mass general court to enact legislation establishing an appointed treasurer for the City of Hoyoke in the form set forth below, provided however that the general court may reasonably vary the form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. This act proposes to change the city treasurer from an elected position to an appointed one. The appointment will be made by the mayor with the approval of the City Council for a term not to exceed five years, and qualifications for the position may be established by ordinance. If adopted, treasurer elected in the 23 municipal election will fill the vacancy and the office for the remaining two years, and a treasurer will be appointed to the position following the expiration of that term in January 26 or sooner if the office is vacated. Motion has been made, or motion to give leave to withdraw. Counselor McGrath Smith?
I actually wonder if it makes sense to suspend the rules and take up seven and eight together, because they're two sides of the same issue. The other issue that we have that I just want to name is that we have not received the legal language that is required for us to move forward with item eight.
I'll second the motion to take them up as a package.
Can I make one friendly suggestion before we do that is, can't we dispose of seven and then we're going to end up unfortunately having to table?
It's the will of the body if folks are happy.
I would do them separate only because they're going two different directions, I think. One, seven's going to get adopted and eight's going to get table because we don't have the item we need to vote on.
Okay.
It's just the will of the body. I didn't know if folks wanted to discuss the two together or if.
Why don't we just, if this one's giving leave to withdraw, I mean, so.
So the committee report on seven is that we voted three to, you know, three unanimously to give leave to withdraw, when the maker of the order, Murphy Rumbelletti, said in the spirit of compromise, they were willing to give this leave to withdraw or recommend that it be given leave to withdraw in order to allow us to move forward with item eight, where instead we have a treasurer who will be appointed, sorry, instead of appointed, elected, and then who will be determined by the City Council instead of by the mayor.
Second motion on item seven.
Okay, under discussion. Motion has been made and seconded, under discussion. All right. Is this a roll call or is this just?
No.
No, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item eight.
So item eight is very much the companion order to seven, except that instead of it, you know, an act of establishing an appointed treasurer for the City of Hoyoke, where the mayor is the one who has the appointing, the power, it becomes the appointing power is, is, you know, lying with the City Council. And there's a couple pieces here that we have named, amending five years to three years, amending may be established by ordinance to shall be established by ordinance, and removing the clause that names the term at the end as elected in the 2023 municipal election, because we are beyond the scope of that time. But the reality is that we can't move forward with the conversation right now, because while the language, you know, the legal language has been shared with members of the committee, it was then never sent to council. So we'll have to table it and take it up at the next meeting.
Motion table?
So, sure, motion has been made to table. Sarah, second.
But well, we can't have discussion if the motion is made to table.
All I want to do is, Attorney Bissonette, are you here with us?
Hi, you.
Hi.
Good evening.
Could we definitely have this language by the first meeting in June? Because we have to get this to the state, to our representative. Is that, is that something that can definitely happen?
Yes, it can, as long as tonight, the council votes that this has to go before the voters to become effective.
Well, so I don't think anyone feels comfortable voting on this tonight because we haven't seen the legal language. The committee members have, but the full council has not, it has not been circulated with the full council.
I understand that piece.
Okay.
But as, as this was redrafted by Attorney Mantuleski, she discussed with me that in this provision, there is no requirement for a ballot question. Unlike, unlike the last ballot question in 2015, which had two enactment clauses, one that took effect when the Great General Court passed it, and the other one did not take effect because the voter voted it down by 80 votes. So to avoid those, those types of problems, and that was unique because that was a year in which there was a treasurer's election at the same time as the ballot question. We don't have that issue for November. But because the section three in the circulated home rule petition requires the act to take effect upon passage by the general court, there needs to be a request by the city that there be a ballot question. Now, as, as some of you know, been down this path before, the Legislative Council for the House of the Senate may in fact insist on it. But because, as pointed out just now, the time is tight. So if you authorize legal to add that provision, you'll get it back at your first meeting in June, and hopefully the next day, Representative Duffy will have the signed version.
I think we have more questions than we did before. First, I'll go with Counselor McGrath Smith, then Bacon, then Jordan.
So through, through the President to Attorney Bissonette, so what you're referring to, I think if we had the language in front of us, we could move forward with what you're saying. The issue is that the draft that was circulated on email internally to, you know, you know, myself and to Murphy Rumbelletti as members of the committee to get feedback on it, that draft that then was finalized by Mantuleski never got circulated back to the full council. So it's not in our packet tonight, and so no one else from council can look at it or or see it. And so as a result, we can't move forward. I know that you're referring to the last line around the enactment provision, and I agree that if we had the, the document in front of us, I think that we could follow the process you just named and move it forward. But we actually don't have the document at all in full council.
Sure. That will be remedied along with the, the enactment section.
Okay, Counselor Bacon and then Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. So as a further point of order, in the initial draft that was sent to committee, it said the act shall take effect immediately upon approval of the voters. And so our understanding is the charter requires the voters to have a ballot question in order to change an elected position to an appointed position. So that's the language I was looking for in the legal form, so that we could pass it forward and make sure everything gets to the state and on the ballot in time. And I thought we were all set on that at our last Charter and Rules meeting. And so it's getting to be a frustration between Charter and Rules and ordinance with things going back and forth two and three times to get the proper legal form. And it's getting very frustrating. Thank you.
Well, I had, if, Counselor Jordan?
Yes.
Go for it.
Just so that there's no lack of clarity, I think we should amend the, so we're crystal clear, amending the committee recommendation that the law department is drafting, that we're requesting that it be made effective upon adoption by the voters of Hoyoke. So the law department has crystal clear clarity that that should be added to the legal form that's coming. So I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
That is the will of the body. And I can't imagine a scenario where we would change something from elected to not elected, when that's taking away the right of the public, their authority. So we would never do that without their consent. So I'll, I make that motion.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. I have, I have two other hands first. Is that, okay. Counselor Devine and then Counselor Givner?
Yeah, this is to Attorney Bissonette. What item eight says is that we're going to petition, a home rule petition to the legislature to pass this. I don't know that we're doing that and then putting it on the ballot. That seems like we're doing two different things. So my question is, and, and I definitely like the language to item eight, but I don't think it says anything about going to the voters. I think when you do a home rule petition, unless I'm mistaken, and the mayor signs it, and it goes to legislature and they pass it, that's it.
That was to Attorney Bissonette?
In this case, yes, which is why, the reason why I called the timeout on the final draft, which included a provision that it took effect upon passage by the general court. And we had a bit of a disagreement about it. But I'd rather be right in this case and get it right, so that when it does go to the voters and if they approve it, it can go into effect. Otherwise, it's a long wait for four more years.
And if it doesn't get approved by the voters, are we back to square one?
In that case, it would be. And I'm not sure if, if it's, it's kind of like the old myth of it has to go on the ballot. Since the optional forms of municipal administration was enacted about 15, 20 years ago, there are other ways, as I've outlined in the memo to the council, of, of being able to change those elected officials to appointed ones. Council has made it clear, as I understand it, that they want a, a plebiscite to vote on this. So that's basically why that final draft, because of that provision, did not appear to the council tonight. That's my fault. And I take responsibility for it. But I'm going to get it corrected for you, so you'll have the right version.
And just one, just one quick question. The legislature is going on their summer recess. What happens if we miss that and they're not there to take this up?
Well, the Great General Court has a festival of collegiality, let me call it, during the summer recess, in which local matters such as municipal charter changes are handled internally by the committees put before the House and the Senate. And if no one objects, they become law on the governor's signature. I see no reason why this particular request would be honored in timely fashion, particularly since it, it was before the voters 10 years ago, and resulted in a very close contest.
Thank you, Attorney.
So Counselor Givner and then Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just wanted to ask for clarification. Once the language has been distributed to the council, it would be my understanding that the council still has to approve the language. So I don't see why we would need to hold this up, because we would still get the ballot language before us to have to vote on that to move forward anyway, unless I'm understanding something incorrectly. Thanks.
That was to Attorney Bissonette?
Yeah, if that's me, no, Counselor, you're absolutely understanding it correctly. Council can vote tonight to authorize it to go on the ballot, and that will be part of the home rule petition. You'll get that back at your next meeting.
Sorry, Madam President, that's not what I meant at all. I meant, once we see the language, we would, would we still need to approve it? Or by voting tonight, are we automatically approving language we haven't seen?
No.
We're not voting tonight.
Right, we can't vote tonight.
You're voting to amend the committee report, then referring it back to legal after then. I understand it.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to note for clarification for everybody, the document that we reviewed in Charter and Rules Committee at our last meeting that made the amendments that are on your agenda is marked item 12. And it refers to the act establishing. And it refers to the act establishing an appointed treasurer, which is going to the general court, which modifies section one and section two with the language that we have discussed that has been amended. And this is the document that we had asked legal to update for this meeting tonight. And the update that was needed were those three items that are on the agenda. Otherwise, the language is right here, and it's been available for well over a month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, could I respond to that?
Okay.
I think a fair reading of what item twelve, item eight says on tonight's agenda and what item 12 said on the committee agenda results in the same conclusion. There is no authorization for the voters to vote on this. And I'm sure, Counselor Bacon, that's not what you intended.
Madam President, to clarify?
One of your three items listed.
Sure.
What I intended was that section three says this act shall take effect upon its approval by the voters, and that was the language that we needed in the updated legal form. That was all my intention was. Thank you.
Okay. So the motion was made and seconded to amend the committee report to the Law Department requesting that we amend the language to say, to include that this will be subject to the approval of the voters of Hoyok. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you.
And then motion to table?
And, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded into table, item eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. All right, moving forward. These are some of the orders that were filed at the last meeting that we didn't get to. Agenda, okay, number nine, filed by Counselor Anderson Burgos, ordered that temporary speed humps be placed on Columbus Ave to see if they will help reduce speeding. It's a constituent request.
Motion to send to DPW?
Motion to send a copy to DPW. Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 10, filed by Counselor Bartley. DPW, please stripe the no parking area on Russell Terrace East Side as soon as possible. This is already designated an ordinance, but the striping has been pending for a few years. Motion to receive, adopt, refer to DPW, and please follow up with the administrative assistant in 45 days to advise if, when installed.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
You like that? Pretty good, huh?
Item 11, filed by Counselor Bartley. That DPW, emergency management, police department, and mayor's office determine a safety plan to better warn truckers traveling on Main Street of the Iron Railroad Bridge at Lyman Street. Yet another, another collision occurred last week. Consider checking out the flashing beacons and warning signs on East Mountain Road, Westfield.
So the motion is to receive and refer to public safety, just because I want to have a discussion on this.
Okay.
In, in committee, okay?
Motion has been made and seconded, oh, sorry, hold on one second.
No, I second.
Okay, thank you.
And then I, I would like to be added to that order.
Okay.
Make them, add Sullivan also.
And I would ask Counselor Rivera, because it's technically her ward too as well.
All right.
Just see if she could be added to the order too as well, Counselor Rivera.
Yep, adding Counselors Israel and Jenny Rivera and Counselor Sullivan to this order.
Yeah, perfect.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Uh, 12 is filed by Counselor Bartley. DPW, install raised crosswalk on South Street at Elmwood Towers, similar to either the ones on Westfield Road at Mayor Field and on Main Street at Dean Tech. Motion to receive, adopt, and refer to DPW and mayor, refer to finance and public safety for a follow-up.
Almost.
Madam, Madam President, I think it just goes to public safety. It's about a street. To put it in two committees doesn't make sense to me. So I make a motion to refer to public safety.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, and, and.
Under discussion?
And I agree with the, the recommendation, Counselor Devine. The only thing is, is that if there's any, like if there's any funding around it or needs to be allocated to it, the conversation would still have to go through finance. So I mean, if you, if you would want it to go to public safety first and then go back to finance, then that's cool. But that's the only, my only.
I'm, I'm just wondering if it goes to public safety and finances need to, money needs to be, the mayor really, that's his duty to pass that on, that, you know, in his budget. That's what I'm thinking.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Bartley and Bacon. Counselor Bacon?
Yeah, and I would just note as a procedural matter, when we're sending things to two committees, one gets the original, the other gets a copy, and they can't act on the copy anyway.
Okay.
So it's just creating confusion.
Okay.
Thanks.
That's all I want to do, okay? So just send it to public safety.
Okay.
And, and then we'll, we'll deal with the finance part later, okay? It just doesn't matter.
All right, so send to, well, receive, adopt, refer to DPW and the mayor, and send to public safety for a follow-up.
Perfect, thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. All right, item 13 is filed by Counselor Bartley. The Veterans Service Department head to look to expanding the number of signs on the, on Hoyok's Purple Heart Trail. Refer to Veterans Service Department, War Memorial Commission, and refer to public service for a follow-up.
Yeah, so moved, but under discussion if I get that.
Yep, under discussion. Counselor Bartley?
This is something I'm incredibly proud of because this is, this was something that, that I helped institute some years ago, and we have a Purple Heart Trail with roots, and I have to really thank Counselor Shattonoff too because she really, really kind of massaged it to make it what it is. And so it's kind of like, it's kind of, it was, got, got off to a great start, and it's still, it's still great. But I, I think it's worthy of expansion, and there's plenty of opportunity to do just that. And I know there are plenty of veterans that would like to sponsor a, sponsor a plaque for, or the children of veterans, for, for a loved one. And I, I just don't think we promote it well enough. And that's what I'm hopeful, that when we get a department head there, I, I, I really want to work with somebody. So, so I, I want to refer, just like I said in here, I just refer it over there, and then we'll follow up in, in committee at some point, public, public service.
All right, thank you. So motions been made to refer to public service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 14, the city council present a proclamation to Barbara Bernard on her well-deserved induction into the Massachusetts Broadcasters Hall of Fame. The event is to take place on June 13th in Boston. And I did have an update, Counselor, just that the proclamation will be ready, and Barbara is unable to attend, obviously, but she's gonna, she, she's gonna send in a message to all of us that will be read at a future meeting very soon.
That's great. So the motion is just receive and adopt.
Motion to receive and adopt, and has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 15, filed by Counselor Bartley. DPW, install temporary no parking signs on the south side of the South Street crossing walk from Elmwood Towers. Please do so immediately so that seniors have a clearer pathway to see vehicles prior to crossing. Leave them installed until the pedestrian traffic light is repaired. Receive, adopt, and refer to DPW. Send order to public safety for a follow-up to ensure compliance.
And just some motions to spend the rules. We, it was a late file C from last meeting. I don't know if the chair has it in front of her, but it was a letter of support from Chief Pratt. And I should probably just amend this slightly to add, refer to HPD, because I think really they're the ones that, they have the authority too. So I'll just amend it to HPD and DPW. And then if you, if you have the letter, that's great. If you don't, I have it in front of me.
Oh, thank you. I'll second that.
Where is it, Brenna?
No.
No, it was a late file from last, late file C. It wa, it wa, it, it wasn't taken up, no.
It's in the packets on our desks.
It is.
It's, it's on the backside, it's on the backside of the liquor license one.
Oh, okay, I would have missed that.
Oh, here it is.
Good eye. Eagle eye.
I just got that. Maybe you could read it.
If the President would like, it's only three sent, three lines I could read it for you.
There you go.
Uh, this, this letter is a written notification of this department's support of the installation of temporary no parking signs on either side of the crosswalk on South Street across from Elmwood, Elmwood Towers. It will provide more visibility and safety for our senior pedestrians. Sincerely, David R. Pratt, Chief Police. So the, the motion is to, is to receive that, and then the motion, the, the other motion would be just what I, what I wrote in, in the order. And then just ever so briefly in discussion?
Yes, so motion's been made and seconded to, I still don't.
Take up the late file?
To take up the late file with.
Take up late file, take final action.
Take final action, uh, to receive the communication from the police chief.
Yep.
Second.
Uh, under discussion, Counselar Bartley.
Sure, so we, we, you heard Brenda Sullivan, who was here public speak out a few weeks ago. We're, we're still waiting for parts for the traffic signals. Hard to say when they're going to come in. But this is something I, I ran by the chief, Brenda, as well as a business owner right there, Mello, and he's a great guy, and, and so he, he, everybody's okay with it. And it's terms of the parking situation now, the cars are really bumping up on either side of the crosswalk. So it's hard enough to get off the sidewalk, then you have to walk out, you know, how many feet to, to, and you're, you know, you're third of the way into the, into the roadway. So this will provide temporary no parking until such time as they fix the, you got her. Okay, that's great. So it, it just provides temporary space. So it gives seniors and, especially walkers and wheelchairs a chance. So that's it.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Now I'm back on 16. Okay, item 16, filed by Counselor Bartley. DPW, work with Mast D O T to remove the dead trees by the U.S. Route 91 overpass at Westfield Road. This area is in need of some attention. Receive, adopt, refer to DPW, and send to public safety for a follow-up.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 17, the city, filed by Counselor Bartley. The city council present a proclamation to the support network, champions of emotional health for children, and recognition of the work it does for youth in the community, and to honor Mental Health Week in Massachusetts.
Receive and adopt.
Receive and adopt. Seconded, Counselor.
Jeffrey has the proclamation, so I don't know if the maker of the order wants to have the people come in on our next city council meeting. It's done, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item 18, filed by Counselor Devine. Ordered that a proclamation be given to Police Chief David Pratt for his over 31 years of dedicated service to the city of Hoyok.
Be received.
Motion to receive and second it, and receive and adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 19, filed by Counselor Devine. Ordered that a digital time clock be provided to the president of the city council in the city council budget for the purposes of keeping time for public speak and city council rule addition to Rule 6C. Charter and rules?
Be received in a, oh, if you want to send a Charter and Rules, that's fine too.
Yep. Okay. Motion to send to Charter and Rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Filed by Counselor Devine, item number 20. Ordered that the city council consider a rule addition to Rule 6C under decorum and speaking, adding the following words as a second paragraph. No counselor shall speak more than four minutes during debate. The president and/or the city council administrative assistant shall keep track of the minutes. A one-minute reminder shall be given at the three-minute mark during debate. Charter and rules?
Be received and sent to Charter and Rules?
Yes, Counselor Jordane?
We already have taken this up earlier this year. We had another one that had this similar language without the time clock. But we had one, and the discussion that took place in Charter and Rules was that we were going to create the 10 o'clock rule as the limit. That was the compromise. We discussed this order and comparable ones to it, and we all decided that we were going to do the 10 o'clock rule as the compromise. So not sure why this is back, but we just literally just aren't, we just literally discussed this and settled this. So if there, unless there's some compelling reason, I think it should be given leave to withdraw.
Okay, all right, so Counselor McGraw Smith and then Counselor Devine?
I think it makes sense to send it to Charter and Rules only because in the context of 19, where it talks about a clock, it doesn't actually name how the clock can be used. And so I think 20 gets at how the clock might be used, which I think we would need to name how it can be used. Okay?
Um, I guess I could.
I have.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Counselor Devine and then Counselor Jordane.
This 10 o'clock clock rule, when was that done?
This year.
Since January to now? Okay.
I don't remember when, but January, yeah.
I think it was about February, actually.
This term, yeah.
Okay. I just think this should be discussed again. I don't think it has anything to do with the 10 o'clock rule.
Okay.
The first sentence.
Can we, can we just send it to committee?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, just being mindful of the time.
We'll, we'll work it out.
Okay, great. That's why we love committees.
Charter and rules.
Charter and rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Yes.
Okay, item 21. Filed by Counselor Devine. Ordered that DPW place a one-way sign facing Pine Street across from the Pine Street exit of the Hoyok YMCA.
Um, receive and send to DPW.
Receive and send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Item 22, filed by Counselor Givner. By constituent request, order that the crosswalks be installed, that crosswalks be installed from the parking lot on Canal, serving businesses in the block between Water and Appleton Streets. Public safety with a copy to DPW?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item 23, filed by Counselor Givner. In an effort to improve efficiency, order that the last sentence of Voting Rule K from our city council rules be changed to reflect motion that the legal form be ordained by a majority of the full council voting in a recorded, or, yeah, recorded roll call vote. Send to Charter and Rules? Uh, Counselor Bacon?
Given that we already have this in ordinance that we're almost to, in completion to be recommending to city council on the third try, I would respectfully ask that this be given leave to withdraw so that we can finish that process because they're in conflict.
Um, okay, okay, um.
It could be refiled depending what happens.
Um, if, yeah, so.
By request.
Sure. I remember the last time we were talking about that order. Um, there was sort of a disagreement on what the intent of that was, so I'm going to defer to Counselor Givner.
Because this one says majority.
I'm fine giving it leave to withdraw and re, you know, refiling if.
If necessary.
If needed, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 24, filed by Counselor Jordane. Ordered that the Joint Committee on City Council and School Committee review the process for the naming of the new middle school, replacing Peck Middle School at the same location, including the apparent desire by some to possibly change the name from Superintendent William R. Peck, who was superintendent of our schools from 1920 to 1963, and a World War I naval veteran, and had this middle school named for him by the city in 1970. That the Joint Committee and Law Department also review our ordinance and rules on naming Hoyok-owned facilities and buildings specifically Chapter 12 of our ordinances so that we ensure we are following the proper procedure for the naming of the new school, which is a city-owned municipal building. Joint schools?
Joint, Joint Committee, I will say positive developments on this. Joint Committee, I will say positive developments on this since we had this table because we ran out of time, was that I think at the last Building Committee, and I do represent the council on the Building Committee, I think everybody's in agreement now that if there were to be a name change, the final say is the City Council. So I think everybody's on the same page now on the rules. This council passed an ordinance on namings and naming rights in 2018. So, there's supposed to be theoretically, if there is a desire to change the name, and me personally, I'm against a name change because this, I think if you study about Mr. Peck and the amazing things he did for the city, and the, he was superintendent for 43 years, a World War I veteran, the whole nine, there was a discussion in the early 70s following his death about the naming of that school. So to replace the school, to take his name off the school now that we're replacing it, I do not feel is appropriate. But nevertheless, we should send it to committee. I think they were going another process until there was a discussion, and I gave them a copy of the 2018 rules, and I think we're all on the same page now. So, we would like this to go to Joint Committee, we'll work it out, but could be seeing a recommendation from me and others perhaps going to keep it as William R. Peck Middle School.
Okay, thank you.
Could you add me to the order, please?
Sure. Okay. Counsel Devine?
Yeah, I'd like to be added to that as well. It was Counsel Jordane that brought this to my attention, and Superintendent Peck was an unbelievable person. He was 24 years old when he was named Superintendent of Schools. He also did a lot of things for women teachers in getting higher pay for them. It's really apropos to today's history, so I certainly would sign up for that and vote in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. So referred to the Joint City Council and Schools. All those in favor?
Aye.
By the way, there'll be a meeting June 13th.
June 13th. All right, item 25, filed by Counselors Jordane, Vacan, Devine, Sullivan, and Bartley. Order that the Hoyok City Council go on record as opposed to the legislation pending in Boston to create a new 2% local surcharge tax on real estate transactions. This new surtax will create crippling costs on our residents and businesses, robbing residents of preciously needed funds, making home ownership even more unattainable and unaffordable, and further reduce economic development in our city. Hoyok has been deeply committed to affordable housing for many decades while many other communities do little to help. Instead of taxing Hoyokers more, the state should be providing resources to cities like Hoyok who are doing their fair share. This new surtax is unaffordable to Hoyokers and allows the state to pass the buck on to cities and towns instead of meeting its own commitments. That this resolution be adopted and sent to our state delegation, registrar of deeds Cheryl Cokely Rivera and the governor's office. Counselordane and then Greenie.
Motion is to receive and adopt.
Second.
Second.
Motion to receive and adopt, under discussion.
Very briefly, because I do want to be sensitive to the long agenda, but just, this is a proposal, I'm reading in the news that, you know, there's a number of local legislators coming out in favor of this. Didn't see too many from around here, but nevertheless, there were some that were coming out, and I wanted the voice to be heard of. There's other people that don't think this is great. You sell your house, and they're gonna whack you with a 2% tax. An average home in Hoyok is $250,000. You would lose 5,000, you'd have to pay a $5,000 tax. You sell a $400,000 home, you'd pay an $8,000 tax. Imagine what that would do to businesses, would be hit with this. They cannot afford that, that is huge money, but whether you're the buyer or the seller, however they divide to pay it, it doesn't matter. This, and I don't know if the, what's being talked about, it's like, oh, well, you can do it locally, so it would be like one of these local option taxes, but I want to make it clear that, I know certainly me, I would not vote to create that in Hoyok, and we cannot afford to be doing that, and I don't think we should start that precedent. It comes back to the point that I made a couple weeks ago, which is, the legislature seemingly seems on this trend to be creating all these new taxes coming down, and then they throw it in the laps of the local city council saying, oh, if you want to jack up auto excise tax to keep it for Hoyok, or you want to, you know, now this one's the 2% surtax on all your real estate transactions and stuff. Hold on a minute, you know, you're gonna put these crushing new liabilities on ours, and this is all because they won't give the communities, particularly the gateway cities, the local aid that we need. There's, it's not about us taxing our people more, it's about we're not getting a fair share of the sales tax revenue and the state income tax revenue and the corporate tax revenues. Those need to be coming down here and allocating the funds to the communities that need them most. We're caught in this vortex of these antiquated formulas that are based on, you know, yesteryear criteria. Now, they've largely fixed it on the school side, so we are doing better on school revenue, but for general fund revenues, we are not getting our fair share. So you're not doing us a favor by passing taxes like this. So before they do this, it's gonna give them an excuse not to give us the local aid, because then they could say, well, you know, you could've passed the 2% surtax on all your residents and businesses, and I don't want to take $5,000 from some homeowner to pay the bills around here. I want them to give us the local aid we deserve. So, that's my take on it, I hope you agree. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counsel Greenie, then Counsel Vacan, then Counsel Gibner.
I don't know how I missed this one, I'd like to be added to this one. I would like to also make a recommendation that the full City Council go in support of this. I don't know if I could-
I believe that's the intent, is that this would be voted on by the council. I will add your name to the order, though. Okay, Counsel Vacan?
Thank you, Madam President. And I would just note briefly that when we add these surtaxes and surcharges and these small local options, they all go into the mix of higher costs. And then we have the people at the rail because their taxes are going up $200 to $500 a year, their rents are going up $300 to $500 a year, because at the end of the day, all these added costs that sort of go into this gray blur all come back around and we all end up paying more. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Vacan, Counsel Gibner, and then Counsel Rivera, and then Counsel Greenie.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just ask through the President to Counselordane, what is this act? What is it called? Where can I read about it? I mean, I haven't heard of this before. The only thing I find is the Affordable Homes Act. I'm curious as to whether this is what we're talking about? Because this doesn't really say anything. I mean, it says, it gives an analysis of your take on it, but it doesn't give me anything to refer to so I can read about it myself.
They're calling it the local surtax on real estate transactions.
Okay.
There was a recent article, I want to say, three weeks ago in the Republican newspaper, if you want to go back and search. It's a pretty extensive article, so you might want to take a look at that.
Okay, Counsel Israel Rivera?
Yeah, I think some of what I was gonna say is that I would, thanks for bringing this right forward, and for me, it's, before I take a vote on it, I would like to kind of like parse it out and like actually be able to look at it, so that way I can have a better understanding of, because right now, the way I'm reading it, it sounds like if I decide to move, right, or I sell my house, I get a, I pay a 2% tax on the sale of my house, right? It's not that I'm paying a tax now, it's that if I decide to move to Texas, I pay, I would pay a 2% tax to the city of Hoyok for leaving, in a sense.
That's right.
I would need to know more, because there has to be a larger piece behind it, just for me to be able to have a clear opinion with regards to where I stand. But I get it, it's, another tax is another tax. So, but yeah, I just wanted, if I could, if I find it, I'll research it or whatever, I have no opinion, I have no issues with joining you guys on this venture.
Thank you. Counsel Greenie?
Yes, Counselordane is correct in saying that the state has underfunded the city of Hoyok for many, many years. Case in point, the special education support from the state has been drastically underfunded for 40 years, and they've been allowed to get away with that, where we have a need for probably 28 to 30% special ed in the school system, and the state probably funds it by 4% or 5%. So, the money, this type of money going to the state, it's gonna come back to Hoyok is very doubtful. The more we give them, it seems the less that we get back. So, they underfunded the school department for many, many years, they're still underfunding the city of Hoyok. It's a legislative matter, it needs to go, we need to talk, once again, we need to press it upon our congressman and our senator about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm not seeing anyone else. So, the motion was made and seconded, that this resolution be adopted and sent to our state delegation, registrar of deeds Cheryl Cokely Rivera and the governor's office?
Second.
Yep, it was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
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 I didn't ask yet.
Oh, my bad.
Thanks, just, hold on, please wait. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
We can take a roll call, though.
We can do a roll call.
That makes it easier, yeah.
But I've also-
I would entertain another motion.
I also believe I've heard the desire for it to be tabled so that folks can just do research and then come back to it in the next meeting.
Yes, Counsel?
The problem I have with that is it's time-sensitive, and it's already been tabled once. So theoretically, you had several weeks now to do your research, because we removed this from the table to vote on it. So, in fairness, if-
Okay, then I guess we'll do a roll call.
If it fails, then, you know, it fails, but I would prefer to move forward so that they get Hoyok on the record here.
Counsel Rivera?
I would argue that this is the first time I've heard of this, whether it's been tabled or untabled, but hey, if you want to take a vote on it and go ahead and push it forward, then go ahead.
Counsel Gibner?
I would just like to say for the record that I'm just concerned that what we're talking about is the Affordable Homes Act, which doesn't say anything about putting a tax on every single real estate sale, so I just, I would be happy to support something that benefits our community, I just don't feel comfortable if it happens to be this Affordable Homes Act, because the purpose of that is to create a tax on million-dollar plus homes and transfer funding to more affordable housing in our community. So I just want to be sure I'm not voting against a proposal like that.
Okay, Counselordane?
Just briefly, one of the problems you'll come to see as you research this is, there's discussions whether or not they'll even have the million-dollar limit. See, that's the other issue. What I'm suggesting is, we're against it, okay? And if they want to debate and to get their whatever, they're gonna put a million-dollar cap, maybe they will, maybe they won't, but what we're saying is, we're not taking that chance. And that, there's a lot of different amendments that are out there, you're right, maybe they do end up capping it at 1 million, 2 million, but all I can suggest is, what they have on the table now is a proposal to create this real estate transaction, and I'm against it. I'd be against it, quite frankly, whether it's a million or not, because tomorrow, they could make it a half a million, and then any business in the city too would also have to pay. So, yeah, I think there's enough information out there, in my opinion. Okay? On the motion.
On the motion, the clerk will call the roll. If you are voting yes, you are voting in favor of the resolution to oppose the legislation pending in Boston to create a new 2% local surcharge tax on real estate transactions. Greenie?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
No.
Rufia Mbalati?
No.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
No.
Seven knees, five knees.
Okay, with that, you've passed it. Moving on to item 26. Filed by Counsel McGrath Smith. Order that the language from sections 74 to 32, 74-33, 74-34, and 74-35 be updated based on guidance from the Board of Public Works and the Recycling Advisory Committee. Send to ordinance? Counsel Vacan? Counsel McGrath Smith?
I just have a question because I'd like to know what those sections are.
Oh, are we gonna talk about that now?
Well, I'd just like to know what the topic is.
Okay, okay, got it, totally fine, just trying to, you know? Get it, totally get it, just wanna remove this.
So, this comes from conversations that I've been having between the myself and the Recycling Advisory Committee that I was initially on, I had to step down when I got on council, and also the Board of Public Works, to be able to have a meeting or an ordinance, we invite in the Board of Public Works members and the Recycling Advisory Committee to have a joint conversation about what the right steps are in terms of revising the recycling ordinances. Right now, they're very specific, so for example, we could change it to say, you have to follow the recycling guidance as set by the Board of Public Works, and we could have nothing specific in ordinance about how you have to recycle, because things are fluid, that's what we're learning in the Recycling Advisory Committee, that we are dual-stream now. In five years, it could be we're switching to a single stream because the Murph has changed their policies, we'd have to completely redo our ordinances as a result. So, there's a number of things that we'd like to look at. Also, looking at what is the way that we will either support and impel recycling for multifamilies, and for which, you know, is it two families, three families, four families, five families? What about businesses? Do we want to continue to allow them to be exempted by virtue of its expense, do we not? Are there certain businesses or types of businesses that we would like to impel to recycle? And so it's just, where would we want to update it? And having a joint conversation with members of ordinance and the Board of Public Works and the Recycling Advisory Committee in order to propose revisions or changes to council.
Thank you. So, motion is made and seconded to send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 27, filed by Counsel Acasio. Order that Patia and Main Street going up or down have that needs to be paved? Is that right? Do you want that sent to?
DPW.
Receive and send to DPW? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Order that James and Temple from the corner to the center needs to be fixed. Receive, do you want to? Send to DPW? All those, awesome, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item 29, filed by Counsel Acasio. Order that Meadow Street be fixed. Residents said that it was filled and sent to DPW?
Second.
The resident, two of the residents there had told me the other day that it had been complied with, they've been fixing it.
Oh, okay. They did fix it?
They did fix it.
They've withdrawn.
Awesome, do you want to give it leave to withdraw, or do you want to still send it to DPW?
Is it also?
If it's been done.
If it's also, you could probably withdraw it.
Said complied with.
Oh, yeah, okay. Motion has been, you want to give it, you want to do complied with, and then you can always refile it if it is-
Motion has been complied with?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Order that a speed hump be put on Main and Temple Street. They're using the road as a speedway, tire marks on road. Do you want that to, speed humps go, yep, Counsel Vacan?
Just as a point of information, if people want speed humps on streets, they have to file a petition and get it signed by two-thirds of either the renters or owners that would be in the affected area.
Okay.
And that would probably apply to that other order we did earlier tonight about placing temporary speed humps. Nothing will really happen with those until a petition...
I don't think temporary ones need it.
Maybe not?
But the permanent ones...
Okay.
So Carmen, maybe we amend this to say temporary speed hump? Because you gotta start off with the temporary, in order to, they do a study, and then if the temporaries work out and it's justified, then they'll consider it for a permanent.
I don't know. I've been waiting for a year.
Well, that's Ward Five.
Temporary speed humps for a petition that was filed.
Ward Two will get it quicker than Ward Five.
Councillor Bartley?
I'm sure it will.
Councillor Bartley?
Yep. So, just through the chair, to my friend Carmen. So, we were talking about items thirty, thirty-four. And we were supposed to take this up last meeting, and I forgot. So, if I could beg the chair's indulgence, just make a motion to reconsider our action at number twelve for the purposes of adding Main Street at Vernon Street to that order. And that'll sort of take care of thirty and thirty-four as well.
I wanted to be apparent.
And I did speak to Carmen about that. She's in support.
Okay, so the motion was made to reconsider action on item twelve and add...
Main Street.
Main and Vernon?
Main Street or Vernon Street. If the chair remembers, there was a traffic light and somebody wiped it out. And now, there's no more traffic light. And it just is not the best situation. And this would take care of Carmen's orders of thirty and thirty-four. So, those could be kind of given leave to withdraw and add, just amend twelve as said.
Got it. Is the maker of the order good with that?
Yes, I'm good with it.
All right. So first, we have item twelve, reconsider action, and that we amend and add Main and Vernon Street to this list.
Crosswalk on Main Street at Vernon, by Springdale Field.
Yep.
Can I make one point?
Yes.
I will say, it is concerning to me that the council votes in a traffic light at Main and Vernon many moons ago. There was a big discussion with residents. We had a resident meeting. The light went in. Some character comes along, crashes into light, they lose their light. And now, we're told, oh, we're sorry, too expensive to put back in. We don't, we don't feel it's justified to put the light back. So now, these residents at Main and Vernon lose their traffic light. I'm sorry. Sue whoever. Go after whoever's auto insurance needs to be gone after, whatever. How is it the residents in Springdale lose their traffic light? Because they're, so I only get a traffic light if some drunk driver doesn't crash into my traffic light? Like, that's the only way I'm, I just hope and pray when I go home every night, somebody doesn't crash into my traffic light? Or I lose it on my street? I mean, that's just not right. And quite frankly, and I know some of the arguments have been made here, sometimes unfairly, in this case, fairly, about Ward Two and in some cases, Ward One not being treated fairly as at-large person. This is a classic example of Ward Two being mistreated, because that would not be tolerated elsewhere. You wouldn't knock out a street light on North Hampton Street. And then they say, well, you know, we decided we don't really have the money anymore to put that back. So, you know, some drunk driver or some irresponsible driver crashed into it, them's the brakes. You know? No, 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 no. That doesn't work that way. That is a dangerous intersection. Those residents rely on that light, because some of those other side streets, you cannot get out. And this was all discussed years ago, and nothing's changed. If anything, it's got worse. And so, my opinion, the answer, so now, we're getting into, we're playing the DPDW's game, because the city engineer, who has now left, he said, wow, why don't we do race crosswalk and all this other stuff instead? No. We said light. So, I'm voting in favor, I guess, if you, on this amendment, and I know it's met in the spirit of that. But I just want it on the record. Me, Kevin, I've always been in favor of them getting their traffic light back. And you shouldn't, you shouldn't decide traffic lights based on who or who doesn't hit it. So, that's, I mean, I hope we're better than that. So, I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bartley?
Yeah, I agree with all that. I just want to get the, something done. So, nope, but passage disorder, just gets the temporary sidewalk in, it'd be a lot faster getting the traffic light in. And I fully support getting a traffic light reinstalled there when, when, when either the engineer or finances come together. But let's just kind of get this done.
Okay. So, right now, we have the motion on the floor is to reconsider action on item twelve and to add the traffic light located at Main and Vernon Street, on Main Street at Vernon Street, and a temporary speed hump on Main and Temple Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, is there now an, a motion to, based on that, give leave to withdraw?
To thirty-four.
Thirty-four and thirty?
Oh, I don't know about that. No, thirty you just passed, and then thirty-four you give leave to withdraw.
We actually hadn't gotten...
I made a friendly amendment to add the word temporary before speed hump, and then I think we should adopt it.
Okay.
And I'll second that friendly amendment.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Let me just...
Was that twelve we just did?
Thirty? Yeah, yep. Thirty.
Twelve?
And so, all right. You're mending twelve.
Oh, we reconsidered twelve, okay. We just did thirty.
We didn't do it yet.
Okay.
No, now, so we did do twelve, and then now, we just did thirty.
Did thirty.
And now, we're on thirty-one.
Yep.
Filed by councillor Ocasio, ordered that no parking on grass sign be put up at Springdale Park. Receive and send to DPDW?
And park and rec.
And parks and rec. All right.
Wouldn't that be park and rec?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Item thirty-two is ordered that they put another poop stand on the other side and refill the one that is already there. Is that at Springdale?
Yes. They have one by where the, where the, that they play baseball at. They have one there, but the stuff hasn't been filled, and I don't know how long they said. But on the opposite side, like, you have to walk all the way with the poop bag, all the way to the other side, you know, to put it. So, it's a distance. So, I was talking to people that were at the park with dogs, and that was, they raised those concerns, to put one on the other side, too.
Okay, so...
By the handball, where the handball court is at.
Okay.
Section, there's not one, but all the way on the other side, there's one.
But, okay, so Springdale.
Other side, a friendly amendment to add, at Springdale Park.
Thank you. There's the second. And we will send to DPDW and Parks and Recreation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item thirty-three, filed by councillor Ocasio, ordered that they go look at the picnic tables at Springdale Park and replace with new ones the cracked and missing screws.
That's park and rec.
Parks and rec.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item thirty-four, this is the one, I'll entertain a motion to give this leave to withdraw. So moved.
Sorry, Linda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item thirty-five, filed by councillor Ocasio, ordered that the black fancying light poles around Clemente Street and South Bridge Street be turned on for residence safety, never on.
They, that's being complied with, but they are missing sixteen lights that are not turned on. Like, literally, I counted them yesterday. I was complaining about, not all of them was on.
Are they still on Clemente and South Bridge, the sixteen?
Yeah, and Sargent, like, most of it's Sargent.
And Sargent?
East Street.
Sargent.
And Hamilton Street.
Just make sure you're talking into the microphone, just so that everyone at home can hear you.
So, there's on Sargent, East Street, and Hamilton, a strip of one side, it's not lit.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Sure.
That this order be adopted, adding Sargent Street, East Street, and Hamilton Streets, and that it be sent to the DPDW and the Hoyoke Gas and Electric, because under discussion, basically, they put in all these lights. Everything's wonderful, absolutely beautiful. Never, never turned them on. And that went on for a couple of years. And it was a who's on first. I thought you were gonna tell me. No, I thought you were gonna tell me. And it became one of those deals. And so, bottom line is, they agreed, everybody got it approved to energize the lights, and they're supposed to be on. But now, for whatever reason, they're still not quite all on. So, we'd like to get this squared away and brought to their attention.
Okay, so add Sargent, East Street...
And Hamilton.
And Hamilton. Send to Gas and Electric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thirty-six, filed by councillor Jenny Rivera, order for the removal of the handicap parking sign currently installed at thirty-six Northeast Street. Tenant Lori Brosenhane has relocated to East Hampton, making the presence of the handicap sign unnecessary at the specified location.
Ordinance.
Send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Okay, so, we just got through...
We have thirty-seven?
That must have been the old late File C.
That was the late File C.
Oh.
That was late File C. Yep.
It was there.
Yes, it was there. I did say that, sorry. I don't know if everyone heard me. Thirty-seven and thirty-eight? What was thirty-eight?
Reappointment?
Um...
Luciano?
That's already been sent to committee? Okay, at the last meeting. Okay. Item thirty-nine is, so hold on.
So, those already went to public service?
Oh.
It was a reappointment.
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine, they're both reappointments.
Just the first one.
Yeah, just thirty-eight already went to committee at the last meeting. So, thirty-nine is from Mayor Garcia, a letter reappointing Anthony, nope, a letter reappointing, appointing James Sutter of thirty Fairfield Ave to serve as a commissioner of the Gas and Electric. Mr. Sutter will serve a six-year term expiring July first, 2030.
Madam Chair?
Councillor Bartley?
May I just, I know it's a reappointment, but may we just send this to public service? And the only reason I'm making the motion is because it's a six-year term, and I kind of want to talk to Mrs. Sutter about the Gas and Electric and what his vision is, that sort of...
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to send to Public Service Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So moved. Item forty is also from Mayor Garcia, a letter appointing Ms. Astrid De Cioti, I probably messed that up, thirteen O'Connor Ave, to serve as a member of the Recycling Advisory Committee. She will replace Meg McGrath Smith and will serve the remainder of her term expiring August first, 2026.
That's public service.
Public service?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Item forty-one is from school committee member Erin Brunell, letter of resignation. And I would also entertain a motion...
Motion receive.
To receive.
And thank her for her service.
And there's another order that I filed.
Ninety-two?
Thank you. To suspend the rules and take item ninety-two as a package with item forty-one?
Yep.
Item ninety-two says, filed by myself, ordered that the city council receive the letter of resignation from school committee member Erin Brunell, and work to schedule a joint meeting with the school committee to fill the position. So, send to the joint schools? Is that, no, wait.
No, I think we, normally, we would just table it or adopt it, or table it, schedule the meeting when you can get everybody together. And I think we'd also want to send a copy of this to personnel, to usually to advertise, and generally, she would help us with any of the applications.
And I do have some updates when I get to the president's report.
Oh, good.
Councillor Bartley?
Well, I don't want to usurp your updates, but I mean, my understanding, Madam Chair, is that we're gonna have possibly another resignation? Is that what your update's about?
No.
Oh, okay. So, my understanding is we'll have another resignation in the near future. So perhaps we could get that squared up. You know, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. So, maybe we could just get all this done in one fell swoop.
If, if there is something that does get submitted, we can, we can try to, I think everyone would prefer to do it as efficiently as possible, but I don't think anything's been received yet.
Thank you.
Councillor Bacon?
Do you want us to table it, so you can get a date and then put it on...
So, actually, the date that we're looking at is to be before the June eighteenth city council meeting.
Okay. So, do you want us, like, come in a little early?
Yeah, at six P.M.
All right, that's cool.
So, that was my update. Cat's out of the bag.
Good.
Um...
That makes a lot of sense. Okay, so June eighteenth.
Okay. All right. So, I am...
I would just make a motion to adopt ninety-two and receive forty-one.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Forty-two is a communication from city auditor, the year-to-date budget versus actual...
A motion to take up forty-two and forty-three as a package and send them to finance?
Mm-hmm, second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take up items forty-two and forty-three, which is the sewer enterprise budget versus actual from our city auditor, send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, forty-four is from the Board of Finance Commissioners, the meeting minutes from March eighteenth.
Motion receive.
Motion to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Just briefly, I do have updates. President's report. So, first of all, congratulations to our friends Jeffrey and Juan. Councillor Anderson Burgos is not here this evening, and neither is my, my right-hand man Jeffrey here. They had their vows renewed over the weekend. A lot of us were able to attend and be there, so we just want to congratulate them. They are on a well-deserved break this week. So, just everyone, keep that in mind this week while you're reaching out to Jeffrey. He's not great at ignoring his emails, so don't tempt him. If there's something super, you can email him, obviously, but you, if you really need something short, like this week, just reach out to me, and I'll see what I can do to help. As a reminder, the PBTA is having a public meeting about changes to the bus route this week, tomorrow, at five-thirty upstairs, second floor in city council, I mean, city hall, where the former tax collector's offices. There is a survey to fill out for folks and available in English and in Spanish, so please share that with your constituents if they can't make it. Another reminder that there is the, we've been invited to attend the Memorial Day ceremony, which is happening this Monday, May twenty-seventh. It's at ten a.m. at the War Memorial. So, hope to see you there. The public is obviously invited to attend. The announcement I was gonna give, obviously, we have received the resignation from our at-large school committee representative Erin Brunell. So, as part of the process, we're going to do interviews taking place before the city council meeting on Tuesday, June eighteenth. Our regular meeting starts at seven. So, the interviews will happen before that, six P.M. Residents are invited to apply. It is an at-large position, so it's not a ward. At-large means the entire city. So, you don't have to be limited to one ward. Residents are invited to apply... Residents are invited to apply and submit a letter of interest and resume to the Personnel Office here at City Hall. Um, the mayor will be sending out, um, uh, an announcement about this, I believe, tomorrow, um, to let folks know that applications will be accepted up until June eighteenth, although candidates are encouraged to submit their interest sooner than the deadline. Um, candidates will be interviewed at the, uh, June eighteenth, um, joint meeting of the Hoyok School Committee, the City Council, and the mayor, and the successful applicant will complete, um, Ms. Brunel's term, which expires in twenty-twenty-seven. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, um, just for clarification, can you just go over how the vote will work and what the numbers will be?
What the numbers will be?
For, for the person to be appointed.
Oh, okay, okay. Counselor, uh, Madam Clerk?
I don't think we've had this happen.
It happened.
I've been on the council.
It did happen, um, last, last term, with, uh, the Ward Three School Committee, um, uh, that was Jadalette Rivera Cologne, but, um, Madam Clerk, can you just familiarize us with the process?
Sure. So what happens, I think it happened again, um, back several years ago, when Irene Feliciano Sims was appointed for the first time. So what happens is, um, we'll call a meeting of the full City Council and the Joint Committee, I mean, the School Committee in one joint meeting, um, with all members of both bodies voting, including the mayor, um, and it will be done the same as a roll call vote we'd have in City Council, um, but just being a majority of the, the entire two bodies will, and that, that person will move forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just a quick question, if we're, um, if somebody sends us their resume and their interest, should, should we just send it over to Kelly?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the whole council will need to see it.
Okay. Thank you.
And they should honestly encourage everyone to just send it directly to her, but if that happens, yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Um, last update, just brief update, um, we were also invited to attend the annual Mount Tom B-seventeen Memorial Remembrance Event. That's happening on Saturday, July thirteenth, um, in the morning, and I'm sorry, I didn't write what time down, but I, I just got this invite, and I'm gonna, I sent it to Jeffrey, and he, when he gets back, he'll send it out to everyone. Um, but that is, uh, Saturday, July thirteenth, in the morning. Anything else I left out? Okay, and we're gonna do our best to be done by ten. I have faith. Um, all right, reports of committees, um, forty-five, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order, uh, whose responsibility to get names to remove handicap signs when individuals no longer live there, uh, recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Rivera?
So, yeah. The order is pretty much straightforward, um. So, we, we kind of had a conversation with Counselor Ocasio, because I believe you're the one that filed this, right, if I'm correct? Around, uh, having the conversation, so, um, we got a report from the Disabilities Commission that stated that usually, when the request comes in, it comes before them, and then when it becomes before them, they go out and they, they research the spot, and they see if it's appropriate, or if it makes sense. Um, and then, I guess what was discovered is that after it gets appropriated, or the space gets allocated, or given to whom, not given, but in a sense, dig, uh, designated as a handicap space, um, is, there is no actual track record as to who, or, or, or like a, a log as to who's been given the space, and, and like the actual address or whatnot, so, in that, it came out that, and I, I see there's order filed by Counselor Bartley in collaboration with Counselor Ocasio for today, that, um, that kind of outlines this, and tries to kind of settle the issue with regards to keeping track of a log, um, with regards to, uh, handing out, uh, handicap spaces. So, we had the conversation, uh, good conversation came about, um, and I think what came out was that, uh, Counselor Bartley in collaboration with, uh, Counselor Ocasio, were gonna file an order to try to find out how to develop a system, or, or have the city develop a system, a tracking system. Um, so we figured that, because we had the conversation and everything came through, that the order was complied with.
Second.
All right, so, motion has been made and seconded that the order has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item forty-six, do you wanna take?
Uh, yeah, item forty-six, um, not a package.
No?
No.
Okay, just kidding, got it. Um, let me read it, forty-six, uh, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the DPW install a handicap sign at six-twenty-four Southeast Street, apartment two oh two for Sylvia Reyes, um, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Yeah, um, so the, the, um, Disabilities Commission that same night gave us, uh, sent forward a recommendation that they, uh, they, they went out and they looked at the space, and they, they, they gave approval for the space, so we recommended that the order be adopted.
Second.
Uh, so.
Motion passed the first reading.
Yep, I was just waiting for, uh, the.
So the motion is to pass the first reading? Uh.
Second.
Under discussion?
Uh, motion.
It may have been on the table.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion that the order be, huh? We're on, yes.
Forty-six.
Wait. Yeah, we're on forty-six. So, motion that the o- that the order be ordained, is that correct, right? Motion that it be ordained?
We didn't do the votes.
Okay, that's the third one.
The first reading and the second reading.
Okay, so the motion was to pass the first reading, under discussion? Yes, Counselor Bartley?
I, I can't, d- d- we, we have the legal form, right?
Do we have the measurements?
We have the measurements.
Space, usually they're with the form.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, that, I, so, I mean, Counselor Bartley, when you ask me, I, I can't, I get my, my desk, bro.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make the assumption that it's here.
Right here, yep.
All right, great.
So then.
So, uh, motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading.
The motion's to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion that the order be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained, uh, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting to approve, uh, the, the handicap installation.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrassmith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you've passed it. Item forty-seven, uh, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that a handicap sign be installed at thirty-four Maple Crest Circle, apartment F, for Victor Ocasio, uh, recommended that the order has been complied with. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, um, and I, hoping that my recor- my memory serves me correct on this one, um, so this one, I believe, was one that, um, was filed by, maybe Counselor Givner, or was it by you? That's exactly what it was, 'cause there was two of them, there was one that was on private property, and that's this one, um, so yeah, it was fi- it was on private property, so they sent it back stating that it's on private property to speak with the landlord. Um, and I'll speak on the other one whenever the other one comes up.
Counselor Bacon?
Person requesting it know that he needed to go to the management company.
Okay.
It's all set.
All righty, so recommended that the order has been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, also, just, uh, for the purposes of, Counselors Bartley and Jenny Rivera, do we have your permission to sign? Okay. Thank you. Um, all right, item forty-eight. Uh, ordinance, uh, to whom was referred an order, zone change application from IG to DR for the Hoyok Housing Authority at six-sixty-two, six-sixty-six, six-seventy-four, six-eighty, seven-oh-two, and seven-ten Southeast Street to build renter, rental and home ownership opportunities, recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, um, we, um, welcomed in the Hoyok Housing Authority and Matt Mainville, um, they had a quick presentation, um, it's a little bit of an expansion to the South Hoyok Homes Project, or not expansion, just the continued process of the South Hoyok Homes Project, where this is the homeowner occupancy, uh, uh, piece, right, the homeownership piece, um, and here, they're looking to get a, a, a zone change, um, to kind of fit the district, um, from IG to DR, to kind of fit what they're trying to map out with regards to the South Hoyok Homes. Um, we got a recommendation from the Planning Department that was in agreement, um, and we got a, I think it was five-zero, four-zero vote, um, passing forward, so, uh, the recommendation is that the order be adopted.
So the, the motion was to pass the first.
First reading.
Second.
Uh, under discussion? Okay.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Oh, sorry, motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was me, sorry, that was me. A lot going on up here right now, I'm sorry.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Uh, motion to pass the second reading, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
The motion that the passage be ordained, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you are voting in favor of the zone change from IG to DR.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrassmith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you have passed it, thank you. Uh, item forty-nine, Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order, um, that the City Council hereby accept the provisions of the USDA Urban and Community Forestry Grant, one million dollars, no match, um, and just a reminder for grant reporting, um, uh, shall be submitted to the City Council, uh, within a reasonable period of time, no later than sixty days from the conclusion of said grant. Counselor Divine?
Yes, thank you, um, we had the, um, Director in, and, uh, we certainly thanked him for a million-dollar award, uh, with no match whatsoever. For improvements to Hoyok's urban tree canopy, this grant will be administered by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Uh, it is, uh, the bulk of the funding will be used to, for contracted tree work to address our list of priority tree removals and pruning. Additional activities will include contracted training and consulting services, equipment rental, and purchase of supplies in support of the DPW Forestry Division. Um, see, there is no match requirement for this grant, all contracted pro- project costs will be reimbursed a hundred percent at the completion of the work, and the work is to be completed, a final report will be given September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. So, I'm, um, we were very happy that, uh, he got the million dollars.
All right, um, so.
Motion to pass the second.
Mo- that would be the motion to pass the first reading?
Oh, okay.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Yes, but I, I mo- motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Uh, under discussion, Counselor Graney, and then Counselor Sullivan, and I think Counselor Bartley? Yes, okay.
Just quickly, uh, the parameters of this grant are terrific, and I think, uh, I'm fully in support of this, I think it would, it's great for the city, and, uh, like I say, the parameters are widespread, uh, and, and we have a lot of problems with the, uh, the trees and so on and so forth, and I think this will help greatly, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, no, it'll definitely help, but, uh, sad to report that the tree climber that we had hired, that we had been waiting years to get, uh, quit today. And left for a be- and left for a better, left for a better-paying job, so, here we go, yes.
All right, Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is great, and, um, hopefully, that, maybe some of these funds can be used to supplement, uh, Personnel line, I, I don't know, but I, I also just wanna point out that since this is so far down the road, and who knows is gonna be here, it's just nice to know that we're gonna have a full report because of the ordinance that we passed a couple of years ago, and it's really gonna be encouraging, um, and, I think motivating to a lot of councils and to the public when they hear all the good news that comes from this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Israel Rivera?
Um, I think to, uh, on that piece, um, I, I appreciate that piece too, um, I think the, the, the piece I kind of wanted to highlight is, this is a huge grant, and if it would be great, and I mentioned this before, that if there's a way that we could in, like, incorporate administrative costs, so we could write off some of this stuff within the grant, and we can have the, the, the extra spending to be able to spend on personnel and different things, or whatever it is, 'cause usually when we get grants, or anyone gets grants, there's an administrative cost, because the person that is managing that grant is doing time on task. So we should be charging that time on task to make sure that we have funding for other pieces, or whatever it is, but just wanted to point that out there, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
One quick, um.
Sure.
Uh, they shall prepare a financial report on a bi-annual basis throughout the project period. These reports will be due each year by May thirtieth and November thirtieth. Failure to submit reports may result in future payment delays, so I'm sure he'll, he'll take care of that.
Thank you. Uh, so the motion was to pass the second reading, oh, I'm so sorry, Counselor Ocasio?
I just wanted to say something on the gentleman that quit today, you know.
Yeah.
Sorry, they can't hear you.
Wanted to say, um, regarding the, the gentleman that quit today, he was very nice, you know, he was like trimming my t- my branches, you know, cutting my trees, and he was a very nice gentleman, I don't know why he quit, you know, but he had, yep, that's, it, yeah, but he was saying also that he did, you know, it's like certain person supposed to drive, have license to drive the truck, another person needed a license to use the equipment to, to, you know, chop up the, 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 the branches, you know, and stuff, so, I don't know, I don't know, and there were, he was very nice, and he was like hard-working, he was on two trees really quick, back to back, you know, so. I had to hear he quit.
All right, I'm not seeing anyone else, okay, uh, so the motion was to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrassmith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
All right, with that, you've accepted the grant, way to go, Yoni, one million dollars. Um, item fifty, the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order, uh, that there be a transfer of one thousand dollars from the Development Specialist, uh, to overtime, recommend that, uh, motions to receive, adopt, and, and pass the first reading, Counselor Divine?
Yeah, this was a, um, um, the, Erin was in, and that position, the dev- Developmental Specialist was not filled, so that's why he had the extra money, and, um, Oped takes care of nine different commissions, and they have to comply with contracts such as, um, um, NAGE employees due to night meetings, things like that, and this person that, um, this overtime is going to, does work nights when necessary, and this should take care of this for the rest of the year.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, not seeing anyone else. Um, so the motion was to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrassmith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Uh, with that, you've passed it, thank you, um, item fifty-one, uh, the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order from the Retirement Board, a communication regarding COLA, uh, recommended that the order be, uh, adopted, um, is, uh, that's the motion to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading, Counselor Divine?
Yep. This was, uh, Tony DeLude was in, he's the head of the Retirement Board, and last year, they had asked for a three percent raise, which would have been approximately seventy-five dollars per person, but it wasn't fiscally, uh, responsible last year, so this year, they're, um, asking for, um, uh, two point, I think it's two-point COLA-based, small thirty dollars per year is what they'll be getting, and the mayor agreed to that, and the liability was increased to two-point-seven million over ten to eleven years. Um, and most of the people that are getting this, it's estimated, the police library and fire department, the teachers have their own, uh, with the state, so we approved that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Um, I just, while I'm thinking of it, uh, the mayor and I have also asked, um, Tony to attend one of the budget hearings in case there's follow-up questions, uh, for, regarding this, you know, for next year as well, so, um, so the motion was, uh, to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading?
Second.
Motion has been seconded to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll.
Greeny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. With that, you've passed that. Um, item fifty-two, uh, Finance, uh, was referred an order, uh, to appropriate a transfer of thirty thousand dollars from firefighters to overtime. Uh, so the motions to receive, adopt and pass the first reading. Councillor Divine?
Yes, um, the chief of the Fire Department was in and what this basically is for is during the summer months when people take vacation, uh, time off, and this gives an extra buffer to that, um, overtime fund.
Anyone else? Okay, so, uh, the motions to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading?
Second.
Motions are made and seconded to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of this transfer.
Greeny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
That, you've passed it. Thank you. Item fifty-three is, uh, from Finance, uh, order that there be appropriated transfer of four thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars, uh, from police, uh, part-time principal clerk to police principal clerk, um, and matron. Uh, so the motion is to receive, adopt and pass the first reading. Councillor Divine?
Yes, um, we had Carl in, or he was on, on Zoom actually, and, um, it's really too bad that this money that we're spending on engineering services aren't going to increase the fee, uh, increase the salary of an engineer. But it's strictly what he's had to do all these months is to take it from one account and do it in the professional engineering.
We on fifty-four?
Councillor Divine, I think...
I'm sorry, wait a minute, what, what?
I think you might be ahead.
Which one?
You might be on fifty-six, but we're on fifty-three.
Sorry.
It's okay. This was for, uh, transfer of four thousand one hundred thirty-six dollars?
All right, that's the police.
Yep. Okay.
Um, motion to pass the first reading?
Yep. Uh, it, motions to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we heard from the chief and, um, one of the reasons why they're transferring this, um, from the principal clerk, um, to, and to the police principal clerk full-time to the matron because they seem to be getting a lot of, um, more, uh, female arrests. And if they get those female arrests, if there isn't a female officer on duty, they have to call the, uh, matron in. So that's really the reason why the transfer.
Okay, um, so is there a motion to pass the second reading? Do you have a motion to pass the second reading?
Oh, sorry, motion to pass second reading?
Second.
Uh, and the clerk will call the roll.
Greeny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
That, you've passed it. Thank you. Um, fifty-four, Committee on Finance, referred from Community Preservation Act Committee, the, uh, fiscal year twenty-five CPA budget proposal. Um, motion is, uh, to receive, adopt and pass the first reading. Councillor Divine?
Yeah, we, um, uh, Megan McGrath Smith was in and she gave us an overview and, and you should have it in your packets tonight. And this is the proposal for the FY twenty-five budget. They've conservatively, uh, done it at fifteen percent, close to what was closely predicted. And the CPA, State of Massachusetts, um, and you might correct me on this, um, Councillor McGrath, has lowered through the Registry of Ds, the housing stock is very low. So, um, the housing just doesn't go that fast. So that's why the, and twenty-six thousand was unencumbered. And Councillor McGrath may want to add to that. I think you did a great job. Well, thank you so much.
We love to hear it, okay? So, uh, the motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading?
Second.
Uh, motions been seconded to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you are voting to adopt the fiscal year twenty-five CPA budget proposal.
Greeny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. That, you passed it. Uh, item fifty-five, uh, Committee on Finance, uh, that there be a transfer of four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, um, from Deputy Treasurer to overtime. Uh, the motion is to receive, adopt and pass the first reading. Councillor Divine?
Okay, and, uh, Rory was in and the, um, this was a position that was not filled midway, until midway through the year. So the person that, um, is, is the Assistant Deputy, Deputy Treasurer, um, was staying late, working, um, you know, late during the day and was trying to get the year end done, um, and that's why he's transferring the money.
All right, anyone else? Okay, so motion's been made to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Greeny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Izzy Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
And, uh, Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. You passed that. Um, the next one is fifty-six. Um, Committee on Finance, uh, that there be a transfer of thirteen thousand dollars, um, from admin overtime supervisors in DPW, uh, to refuse pay, forestry pay, overtime, parks pay, longevity, admin pay, overtime, admin, education expense, property R and M, senior center, property R and M, Hoyoke Fire Station, auto pay, longevity. Uh, the motion, uh, is to receive, adopt and pass the first reading. Councillor Divine?
This was a, um, pretty straightforward according to Carl. It's just to cover, um, balance for the rest of the year.
Is there anyone else? Okay, so motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading and the clerk will call the roll.
Greeny?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Izzy Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. Item fifty-seven is from Finance, uh, transfer of forty-five thousand dollars, uh, from the civil, senior civil engineer and engineer to professional engineering services. Uh, motion is to receive, adopt and pass the first reading. Councillor Divine?
Yep, this was, um, again, um, it's a shame that we have to be spending this type of money on professional engineering services instead of just being able to increase the salary of a, an engineer that we can't seem to, uh, attract. But, uh, that's really what it is for. Um, they usually, uh, work about a hundred and twenty hours a month. Lots of prod- projects are backing up and they get a hundred and sixty dollars an hour. So...
Thank you.
That's kind of it in a nutshell.
Anyone else? Okay, so the, um, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion to pass the second reading. The clerk will call the roll.
Greeny?
Reluctantly, yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Acasio?
Yes.
Izzy Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With that, you've passed it. Item fifty-eight, Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order, uh, where Mass General Law, Chapter four forty, Section five, be authorized the municipality to create a stabilization fund and Chapter seventy-seven of, uh, tw- General Acts of twenty twenty-three eliminated the minimum three-year provision and authorizes the municipality to terminate a specialized stabilization fund at any time. And whereas the City of Hoyoke, uh, through its council, voted in June twenty-three to create such a fund to accumulate revenue from the Massachusetts statewide opioid settlement and whereas, uh, the city now wishes to terminate the opioid settlement stabilization fund and the dedication of revenues received from this settlement as authorized under Chapter seventy-seven of the Acts of twenty twenty-three and to create a special revenue fund for ongoing opioid settlement revenues as authorized by DOR. Now, uh, be it ordered, the stabilization fund created in June twenty-three to receive opioid settlements and the dedication of any revenues is hereby terminated. Uh, recommended that the order be adopted. Councillor Divine?
Yes, um, Councillor Bissonette, uh, was good enough to explain all of this to us and the bottom line really is the state forced us to close the account and open up a new one. So now we can use the new one in a better way than we were able to use it before. Um, and I'm not sure if people have questions for, um, Attorney Bissonette, but that's the gist of it. The state told us to close one account and add another and do a brand new one.
Okay, uh, Councillor Greeny?
Yeah, just relook, uh, just, I think it was seventy-six grand, wasn't it?
Uh, let's see what we got here. It was... I have four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
The op- not the opioid.
No, no, no. Perhaps Councillor, um...
Thought it was about seventy-four thousand or something like that.
I don't have that written here, but maybe, um, Attorney Bissonette? Can help with that?
Want to help if I can. Uh, the city so far has received about four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Councillor Greeny's right, the stabilization fund itself has either seventy-four, seventy-six thousand in it currently. That money would be transferred to join the rest of the money
Right.
in the, uh, uh, the ongoing account that's being created now for the seventeen years of expected payments that will be forthcoming, uh, to Hoyoke from the opioid settlement.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted that figure out there. That's all that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Jordan?
Yeah, I, I don't know if the chairman or Attorney Bissonette, whoever would be the most appropriate, but I just want to make it, uh, clear, my research tells me that one, there has been a rule change about how the funds are handled. But if you did establish a stabilization account or, and funded it, you're allowed to keep that. You don't have to disband it, number one, under the rule that they, uh, came out with from the Department of Revenue. It just said that it wasn't required. That's number one. Number two is that by us taking the money out of this stabilization fund and moving it into this other dedicated fund for the future, this other fund does not require a vote of the city council to expend. This is now going to take the authority away from the city council as it relates to these funds. So that's a key point. So originally, we were gonna receive these monies and put them in a dedicated stabilization account. That's what happened and that's why the seventy-six thousand dollars ended up in there. Now, you don't have to have it in a dedicated stabilization fund. Now you can have it in this account and only the mayor's approval is required to spend those monies. No vote of the local legislative body. So, there's nothing we can do about the future money because I doubt the mayor is going to, when he has full unfettered voting power to do whatever he wants with the money, is gonna put it in the stabilization fund and therefore subject it to, uh, the rules that are subject to the stabilization fund. But why is it that we would want to remove these funds when we have no idea how they're gonna be spent in the future? At least as it relates to these monies, we would want to keep that and then they would have to have it checked out with us as to how that's gonna be spent. So I just want councillors to be aware, and that's why I'll be voting now, that you're giving up your authority to have say over these funds and now moving it to be part of the mayoral approval only fund. So just so you know, if a yes vote is to do that, a no vote is to keep the money there. The money still has to be used for this purpose, but like any stabilization fund, it would require a two-thirds vote of you to give it to whatever, you know, noble thing that they come in to say that it's for. That's a, a lot of that work is to be determined, but That's a, a lot of that work is to be determined, but that's my, that's my concern, having read the local, the the D O R, D L S ruling on it. So I did want to just point it out. They basically said local legislative body vote in the future is not required for these funds. That's essentially what they said.
Thank you. Counselor Bacon and then Counselor Greeney.
Thanks. I just had a couple of questions, because I was wondering if we changed to this other type of fund. I understand how we track it in a stabilization fund, but in a special revenue fund, I was wondering how it would be tracked, you know, for the monthly reporting purposes. And then secondarily, I was wondering how it would be then reflected in the budget going forward if we change into this other type of account.
Counselor Devine, did you want to address that?
I can just go by my notes and what Attorney Bissonette told us. The stabilization fund was to create a revolving fund. Again, I appreciate what you're saying as far as the council not having the authority anymore, but it didn't say that in here, so we didn't take that up at all. But if Attorney Bissonette has more to add on that.
Attorney Bissonette, do you have anything to add?
Well, technically, you could not dissolve the stabilization fund, and the council would continue to control approval of the expenditure of that amount of seventy four, seventy six The remainder of the money, which I've calculated now, I think is two point two million over seventeen years, that's going directly into the fund by state law. The state law that was approved at the request of the M M A and after a lot of negotiation, because this has delayed the use of these monies and getting it out on the street to deal with the opioid issues. This is a way that the legislature and D O R came up with for the money to get used relatively quickly. But as it stands, that would be the only required amount. And I believe if you did that, it would also trigger that new rule that only a majority vote would be required to expend. Not certain on that, Kevin. Counselor Jordan, you may have seen something on that. I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe this is a majority vote now, just on this one. Thank you very much.
Okay. I have Counselor Greeney, then Counselor Sullivan, then Counselor Gibner.
My, my question was through the chair, but I believe Attorney Bissonette answered it. There is really no, no requirement that we transfer this money into that fund.
Is that correct, or, okay. Then I have Counselor Sullivan and then Counselor Gibner.
So just so I understand this completely, Counselor Bissonette, the three hundred and seventy five thousand we already have is already in the.
Four seventy five.
Four seventy five that we already have is already in the special revenue fund over which the council has no say.
Mr. Sullivan, it's, I think it's four hundred thousand is already in, and then another seventy five that was originally received is the amount that was placed in stabilization.
Right, and the total of two point two million regardless is going to go to the special revenue fund. It's regardless, even if we keep the revolving fund, all it does is leave us control over the seventy four that's in there and nothing over the two point two million over the course of the next seventeen years.
That's my understanding, because the legislation specifically says without further appropriation, making it more like a revolving fund.
All right, so basically, we've already lost control of the two point two. It's just the seventy four we're trying to hang on to.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Gibner and then Counselor Israel Rivera.
Thank you, Madam President. There are reporting requirements for cities, so I, I think there's a lot of questions that can be answered, just looking at the opioid, opioid fund settlement and like the rules from the state. I, I don't believe that there's, you know, unfettered power of the mayor to just do whatever he wants with the funds, because there are requirements of what can and cannot be done with the funds. I think it would be nice if we got to vote on projects, but at the same time, I could see how this money is being held up, and it really needs to be spent in our communities. So if the state is saying that these are the parameters for which the money can be spent, and this is how you have to report back to us, I, I really, I don't know, I don't know if we can do a lot to change that, if that's the state requirement, but there are a lot of parameters, so we will be following them because they're requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rivera.
I think while I, I share the sentiment of potentially losing quote unquote control over two million dollars. I think that there's, there's a difference between macro and micro management, right? And our role kind of sits a little more in the macro sense. I kind of, how do you say it? Whatever mechanisms are built to spend the money in the future, they're still going to have to come to the council. They want to, they want to create a new position, they got to come to the council. They want to create a new department, they got to come to the council. So in a sense, there are other mechanisms in place. It's just not one that we like in a sense, what it sounds like. It's not one that directly gives us onus over this much money. And I get that, I feel that, but the reality is, is that this funding is not necessarily taxpayer dollars that are directly allocated from us from local allocation. This is something that was a lawsuit that we kind of stumbled across, right? And that we have an auditing department that will be tracking all of this stuff. There are procedures in place. I would like to have control over the, the stuff. I'm not saying that I, I wouldn't have that, but that's just not my role, though, in a sense, right now, I guess, and that's not what was outlined for us right now. But I would also say that to try to keep seventy six thousand dollars in another account away from the two million, just because, sounds kind of petty, but whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan.
Yes, being petty is what I do here all the time, and right down to the penny, I, I watch all of it, whether it's a nickel on the ground, I would certainly pick it up. And, and here's a nickel, I guess, seventy five thousand dollars, so I don't know how many times twenty would be the number of nickels. I, I believe that's real money, and I would want to definitely have say. We, we had to develop the whole plan, you know, again, we have meetings, and we talk about strategically what we're going to do with these, and the mayor proposed that we would have this fund for the opioid dollars, and we would work together to strategically spend them, and hey, they, you know, it isn't just for him, but all the other mayors, I guess, in the state will now be able to just do whatever they want. This will be basically coming to be another ARPA slush fund, and who only knows where all that money went or goes or whatever purposes? Yeah, it's accounted for. I'm sure it's all legal and legitimate purposes, but I believe government works best where there's accountability and checks and balances. I mean theoretically, if you listen to some of these arguments, you'd say, why do we even have a city council? Why do we even have a city budget? Just give the mayor a hundred and fifty million dollars, and you know, you just do what's best and just, you know, show us where in the checkbook you spent the money. That's actually the logic of some of these arguments. I, I maintain that essentially we should have checks and balances, we should have a discussion about where monies goes, and I think that's how we get to good strategic development, that sometimes, you know, we put the money here, we put the money over there, and sometimes we have compromise. Otherwise, you know, all of a sudden so and so just gets a check for two million dollars, and we don't know if we actually ever saw anything for that, you know? I guess you have to go to the press conferences where these grandiose announcements are made, and you, you wonder how these things really help the community, you know? And, and I'm, I'm concerned, I, I would definitely, I don't think it's in the best interest of taxpayers. When we do get these type of sums of money, they're really used often to offset other costs or to help the community to really recoup some of the expenses that we've had in our police, in our board of health. I'd like us to be more strategically, I mean, but those are the rules, and they've come out with this ruling, and they're going to let the mayors in the state do, or the board of selectmen in their case, do, do whatever they want to do with these funds if they should receive them. Having said that, we do have control over the seventy six thousand or thereabouts money that we've spent so far and that we've saved so far, so I wouldn't want to just say, okay, well, we gave up our authority, and we've lost our authority on two million, I'm going to, by the way, here's another seventy five, seventy six thousand. So no, I think they should have accounting for that, and they should have a vote, and I'd like to see a specific plan as to how the seventy six thousand is going to be spent. So that's, therefore, I would say, I would recommend to everyone that you vote no on this, and keep these monies here until we get a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Counselor Bacon, Counselor Rivera, Counselor Gibner, and Counselor Devine. So I just want to let everyone know that we are twenty minutes away, and this is a conversation that we probably could have had in finance. So I'm just going to remind everyone, if you really want to, everyone wants to talk for, this is going to be everyone's second time talking, and after that, when we get to the third time talking, we all have to take a vote on it. And I also want to remind people, I'm standing up here, and I can see when you're talking under your breath, so please, it's distracting for me, it's distracting for other people. Please, just let's, we've all been doing great tonight, and we have eighteen minutes left until ten P M. So with that, Counselor Bacon, and then Counselor Rivera, and then Counselor Gibner, and then Counselor Devine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As you know, I'm usually brief and to the point. So I would feel more comfortable turning over this stabilization fund if, for example, we had our free cash certified, but here we sit on May twentieth, and we don't even have that yet. So for me, right now, I'd rather keep it in a fund that we can take a look at, and I understand the rest will change, but that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rivera.
I think for me, I don't, it's, it's not, it's never about, there's narratives, right? There's whatever, it doesn't matter. At the end of the day, if people feel like we have better opportunities and other ways to do things, we can all run for mayor too as well. But thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gibner.
I'm all set, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Devine.
I might suggest that instead of taking an up or down vote now, that I'm having a finance meeting June twelfth, if we invite the law department and Representative Duffy, because she may be able to tell us more about what this is specifically about, rather than just turning it down completely. And my notes also reflect that there's still three cases remaining unresolved in bankruptcy court. And again.
Motion to return to finance?
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to send this item back to finance.
Second, and.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
Invite Representative Duffy in.
Can I make a motion that we start being strategic? Because what's going to happen is going to go exactly like you did last time, where we're not going to get to turn our rules, we're going to be scrambling to figure out things we have to move to committee. So let's please move to item eighty nine and move that to finance.
Second, so moved. I can, Madam Chairman.
So motion has been made to and seconded to suspend the rules and take item eighty nine out of order and send to finance. Let me read it first. Ordered that.
I'm going to pass that tonight.
What's that?
Go ahead and read it, and then I'll.
Okay, thank you. Ordered that there be a transfer of seven thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars from T N C Ride Share to O P E D, Other Contracted Services. Counselor Devine?
Yes, this is a, I'd like to see if we could pass this tonight. I did get in touch with each member of the finance committee today and yesterday, and we covered everything, and I'm happy to read what this is about from Aaron Vega's department. This is the bike share pro, is that all right?
Yeah.
This is the bike share program that will be returning in June of two thousand and twenty four. The seven thousand, seven hundred and twelve administrative fee covers April twenty four through April twenty five to align with our contract that just started with Drop Mobility. That's the new company that's going to take care of these bikes. Apparently, last year, there was no bikes at all, because the company either went bankrupt or just stopped serving them. The administration fee is, was much reduced amount since bikes were not on the street, but cost covered below, as noted. Despite not, despite not having an active bike share last year, the administrative team was busy the past two years working to bring the bike share program back. City issued an R F P January first, evaluated bids, issued contract with D R O P, and after it was clear that B Wagon would be going bankrupt, the administrative team got into action, securing the performance bond was issued priority one, getting all seven hundred bikes into storage for the last season, contract for movers, contract for storage, manage movers. New scope of work developed, convene regional partners to help determine direction, use issued R F I to understand the cost and determine the next path. So the reason I wanted to take it up tonight, so that we can get it going in June of two thousand and twenty four, and like I said, all five members of the finance committee, I did speak to them, explained everything, I read this letter from Aaron, and they were all in agreement that we pass this tonight. So I would appreciate it very much if we could do that.
So the motion was to suspend the rules and take final action on item?
Second.
Eighty nine. And that would be a motion to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, and the clerk will call the roll. If you are voting yes, you're voting in favor of this transfer. Greeney?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGrath Smith?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelotti?
Yes.
Ocasio?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Gibner?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, one nay. With that, you've passed it?
Motion to suspend the rules to take up item ninety.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to go out of order and take up item ninety, filed by Counselor Gibner, ordered that the city council approve a license agreement by this, between the city of Hoyoke and Verizon for relocation of cables at Anniversary Hill Park project located at Scott Tower. D G R, Counselor? Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Make a motion.
And rules and take up item eighty three, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take up item eighty, go out of order and take up item eighty three, filed by Counselor Bacon, that requests the Hoyoke Gas and Electric to add a streetlight pole, streetlight on pole thirty two, twelve on Whiting Farms Road. This is a request from a resident at Tokoniki.
Receive and adopt and send to H G N E. They just need the order from us.
Okay, receive, adopt, and send to H G N E. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Madam President, can we take up item number eighty eight, so that that proclamation can be given at our first June meeting?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt item eighty eight, which orders that the city council issue a proclamation declaring May Lupus Awareness Month and present it to the Pioneer Valley Lupus Awareness Support Group at our first June meeting, which I think is June second?
I don't know.
Fourth?
Just the first Tuesday in June.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules and take up as a package items sixty, sixty one, sixty two, sixty five, sixty six, sixty seven, sixty eight, sixty nine, seventy, seventy one?
Whoa, can you slow down? Sorry, girl.
They're all the ones that are going to be given to withdraw seventy three?
Yep.
Seventy five?
Take sixty.
With an abbreviated reading?
Y'all are killing me right now. Um, hold on, I got, okay, I don't get paid enough for this. Sixty, sixty one, but now someone wants me to take out sixty one, sixty, is that?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm trying to.
Oh, no, forget.
Those leave to withdraw.
So sixty, sixty one.
Sixty, no.
Sixty two, sixty five, sixty six, sixty eight, sixty nine.
Sixty seven too, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, sixty seven, sixty eight, sixty nine, seventy, seventy one, seventy three.
And seventy five.
Seventy five.
With abbreviated reading, they're all orders that.
Uh, do you want seventy nine?
Seventy nine, yeah, that's another one.
It's not the same committee, but it's given leave to withdraw.
That's wrong.
Yeah, that's not good to me.
All right.
I'm sure.
Yes, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to object to all this, because at least, yeah, my orders that are on here, I, I forgot the numbers, were never taken up in committee. Now, I know for a fact that the Public Safety Committee had, had a meeting, but there are only about nine orders on there. All the rest of them were, were tabled in committee, and I didn't attend the meeting because I made the assumption, perhaps falsely, that items tabled when it says not to be taken up for discussion would not be taken up for discussion. So, and, and so that's point one. Point two is, why are we playing Russian roulette with the agenda? When we have councilors chiming in, take up eighty seven, take up eighty four, take up ninety, this is no way to run a meeting, and I'm going to ask you to, I mean, listen, we got to deal with it tonight, but there's got to be a better way than just councilors, because they want to take up their orders because we're running against the clock?
Well, so, thank you, Counselor. I also would like to implore the body to maybe keep it a little briefer at some of our meetings. The purpose of a ten P M deadline was approved by this body, and the purpose of that was to make the meeting shorter. Now, with all due respect, I can try my best to control what everyone talks about, but I've also been told I don't have the authority to do that. So I'm trying to keep this meeting to under ten P M, and I can respect that there's councilors who are well within their right to ask that something gets taken out of order, and I'm going to be honest, I don't love doing it that way. I doubt our clerk loves doing it that way. It's not ideal, right? But that being said, I'm one person, and we don't have time limits on how long you are all allowed to talk, so that's on you to kind of dig deep within yourself and find a way to keep this a little shorter, and maybe not repeat everything that's discussed already at committee. So with that being said, I'm happy to enforce a little bit more, and I think honestly, a running clock might be a great idea, so that everyone knows how long we're all talking about a certain order, and I'm going to take up time right now to reiterate this, because that's not on me. I don't even get to debate. So all of you, with all due respect, try to just be a little briefer, and then we probably wouldn't have this problem. But thank you so much, and going forward, I will be sure to do my best to keep everyone on track. With that, there is an order, a motion to take all these items that I just listed, and if we're going to vote on this, um, oh, no, y'all are something else.
I give my motion leave to withdraw?
Yes, Counselor Bacon, and then Counselor Ocasio.
For efficiency.
Yep.
If we could take all these items just identified as given leave to withdraw, that there are some objections and confusion about.
Sure.
And leave them on the table.
Okay.
So then people can look at them between now and the next meeting and approach the chair with the orders that they want kept in committee on the agenda, then deal with it at the next meeting. It's just a suggestion, but I would offer it as a motion to table all of the orders that have been given leave to withdraw, so we can move on with the rest of the agenda.
Okay, so there was a motion to table.
I'll second that.
For the, okay, so motion was, yep.
Okay.
The, the motion was slammed on the table.
Given leave to withdraw, so we can move on the other stuff.
I was just going to say, I'll second it under the fact that to give everyone whatever, doesn't matter.
All right, so now they're laid on the table. Great.
They have to, it has to be.
We have to vote.
Oh, true, yeah, so true. Oh, true. Yeah, so true. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
I think the ayes have it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, move on.
That's that.
Motion to extend our meeting till ten fifteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to extend the meeting to ten fifteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Where are we?
I don't even know where we are now.
I think we're on sixty-three.
We have not done fifty-nine.
What?
We haven't done fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
Oh, fifty-nine, you're right.
Okay. Item fifty-nine, the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the city engineer provide a list, layout of non-accepted roads, and come in to discuss options for fixing the roads. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Councillor Devine?
That's pretty basic. One, we don't have a city engineer, and my understanding was that this was done in the past already, so that's why we gave it a, recommend that it be complied with.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motions have been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right. Item six, nope, we did, those are, I'm not.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three. All right, so seventy-two?
Did you skip sixty?
Sixty-three.
Sorry, sixty-three. Thank you. The Committee on Public Safety, to whom was referred an order that the city's law department, along with the public health, come in and elaborate on the status of the property in the corner of Lyman and North Summer. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Councillor Jenny Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to quickly clarify what happened in public safety meeting with all the items that were tabled. Attorney Bissonnet was online, and Attorney Bissonnet was asked if those items could have been, because a lot of them were leave to withdraw, obviously, because of them being two years old, and the answer we got was yes, because they were on the agenda by Attorney Bissonnet.
Okay, thank you. Item sixty-three?
Madam Chair, to the point of order?
Yes, councillor.
Well, I'm sorry, but?
No, I just said, yes councillor.
Thank you. So, and I, just through the chair, Jenny, I appreciate that. So, in my opinion, Attorney Bissonnet had no right to give that advice, because there's no rule that he can point to that says two years. He, he made it up. So, that was erroneous advice, and I was curious, and I knew you would never do that. So, I, I didn't watch the meeting, I didn't attend the meeting, because I saw your agenda items on there, and so I really appreciate your clarification. So, the advice you were given was wrong, and so there was no authority whatsoever for, for that, for, for that to happen. You took legal advice, which makes sense, but, but that was wrong, Mike, and you, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have advised that. So, there, there's no rule that allows that to happen, none. So, thank you for that clarification, and that would have avoided this nonsense. I appreciate you, Jenny. Thank you.
You're welcome. But just, let's clarify, he didn't authorize them being two years. That's why it was brought up, if they could be taken out, and what he said was yes, because they were put on the agenda. So, just wanted to clarify that.
We've never done that. He, Mike knows that.
Okay, I have councillor Rivera, and then councillor Devine.
I just wanted to elaborate on item sixty-three, because I was the one that filed the order. That was a lot that was, um, that is deemed as surplus, and not deemed a surplus, someone had passed away, and they're not cutting the grass, and no one is maintaining it, and I've been kinda following that over the last two or three years. And, uh, the public health department, um, the new person, his name escapes me right now, came in and said that we're actually taking this lot, and through title lien or whatever the language is. So, eventually we'll have that, and then that will no longer be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Devine, did you have your hand up?
As, as a member of the Public Safety Committee, Jenny asked a very legitimate question of Attorney Bissonnet, and he also, and some of these orders are over two years old, and I don't know why the councillors that filed those orders haven't checked on them, but they're, they haven't. So, councillor, Attorney Bissonnet said the councillors that filed those orders could refile them in the future, so.
Thank you.
On the motion?
Is there anything you wanted to add councillor about that? I feel like councillor Rivera gave?
You gave a brief, yeah. I was just gonna say, Mr. Rivers provided an update on the property indicating that on April thirtieth, he signed a waiver for a tax lien clearing the title and allowing the city to proceed with acquiring the land. So, basically, we did orders complied with.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Item sixty-four, the Committee on Public Safety, to whom was referred an order that the mayor and the building department, Board of Health, Law Department, provide the city council with a status report on the demolition and resolution of the dangerous abandoned building twenty-seven twenty-nine Cabot Street and five-ten South Bridge Street. Councillor Rivera?
Okay. So, Mr. Rivers, as well, from the Board of Health, he noted the immediate unsafe structure portions were demolished using our funds, and a lien was placed on the property. He stated hazardous conditions were addressed, but the property's owners transferred to a new owner named Manny Perez, who has expressed interest in rehab, rehabilitating the property. Although discussions are in early stages, the city intends to pursue enforcement and legal actions regarding unpaid fees and continue non-compliance. The planning department has engaged with Mr. Perez, potentially leading to a rehab plan. Additionally, the city plans to install surveillance cameras in the area to deteriorate illegal dumping. Enforcement efforts will continue, and the case has been referred to the law department for further action, and the new property owner, he's not even from Hoyoke, I believe it was like Waltham, Mass. So, that's like a little brief. And then this ordered?
Thank you. Levin's just, let's, uh, we're on sixty-four, and the order has been complied with?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The side conversations are killing me, so?
You and me both.
Like, it is very distracting. I will call, I will keep calling it out. Please, just stop. Thank you. Uh, item sixty, seventy-two. The Committee on Public Safety was referred an order that the mayor, in conjunction with our department heads, develop a comprehensive, clean Hoyoke initiative that develops a strategy to clean and beautify Hoyoke. Recommend that the order has been complied with. Councillor Rivera?
Sorry. Simple is that the order's been complied with, as the mayor already has the flex squad in place, so complied with.
I can't, I can't. Um, all right, so, that the order has been complied with. Anyone else? Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item seventy-four, the Committee on Public Safety, who was referred an order, the city engineer present a plan to city council to improve lower Whiting Farms Road for following conditions. Motors regularly ignore the no-left turn into Kmart Plaza. Moreover, if motors do not abide by the no-left turn, they often make an illegal U-turn. Recommended that the order has been complied with. Councillor Rivera?
Um, yes, the order's been complied with. Of course, we have no city engineer, but we also know that councillor Bartley has filed an order to make the left-hand turn into the Kmart Plaza legit, so complied with.
Anyone else? Councillor Bartley?
Yes, just, just through the chair to the chair. Jenny, and I have no problem with your motion. I just, when did you take that up? I don't even see it on your agenda.
Um, on the fourteenth.
On the fourteenth?
Yes.
I mean, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the agenda. Now, I have no problem with this, because I, I, frankly, I thought we took care of this, uh?
We did.
A year ago.
We did.
I thought, I thought we?
When I was the chair.
Over from the jacket?
Right.
Well, I, I have no, no worries about it. I just?
Yeah.
I literally don't see it on, on the agenda whatsoever.
Councillor Rivera, is that what you were gonna say?
So, yeah, if I made through the chair. So, I was gonna say, we took this up when I was the chair, and then it came up again for some reason, so that's why it's kinda leave to withdraw, but also what came up in the conversation, or complied with, I'm sorry, thank you councillor Bacon. But, what also came up in the conversation is that we did do that, but it never got, like, the structure never got changed for someone to take a left into Kmart Plaza. It still has that little curve, so like, it's kinda dangerous for you to take that left, so I think the next thing would, to do that.
Councillor Bartley?
So, through the chair to the other chair, I, I agree with you, and so that's something, I really appreciate you bringing this to my attention again, and so when we get the city engineer back, but, this, this I gotta address then. All right, okay, thanks guys and gals.
Okay, um, all right, so those, we got through those. Um?
We have to vote on that one.
So, seventy-six, the Committee on Charter and Rules, to whom was referred an order that the joint city council and school committee have a standing order to report on the city council on meeting topics originating from the school committee. Recommended that the order be adopted. I do see, oh, councillor McGrath is on Zoom. If our friends at Hoyoke Media could help me, I don't, I don't, I'm not a host, so I can't add Meg to be a panelist. There we go. Okay, councillor?
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Meg again.
Okay.
Sorry, I had to run out. My, I have a sitter, because my husband is away on work this week, so I have to get back. I'm, I'm gonna be zooming in. So, I just wanted to name that this felt like a no-brainer, made sense, and that this was a three-to-three recommendation.
Thank you. I also just want to acknowledge that we didn't actually vote on seventy-four, that the order has been complied with, so my apologies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Does anyone want to follow up or add to councillor McGrath Smith's update? Councillor Bacon? Oh, I'm sorry. We are on item seventy-six.
Seventy-six.
Okay. Okay. So, recommended that the order be adopted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Uh, any opposed? So moved. Item seventy-seven, the Committee on Charter and Rules, referred an order to amend Rule six E by adding that no member of the city council shall make references to about, to or about another member, but in respectful terms, whether inside or outside the city council chambers, including on social media. Recommended that the order be referred to the full council without recommendation. Councillor McGrath Smith?
Hi, the committee report on this, we had a lengthy discussion, and I feel like what came out of that was that while it is best practice, and folks would hope that is the case, that we would always speak with each other in respectful terms, and about each other in respectful terms, that it wasn't something that we could put in our city council rules, as it was referring to something that was outside of city hall chambers.
Okay. Councillor Bacon?
Thank you. So, we had some interesting and lively debate on this one, because, and speaking as a member of the committee, that if we are making the rules for inside the chamber, and we're all voting for them, we're each responsible for governing our own behavior outside of the chamber, and that the rules can still carry outside. The analogy I used is, when I was serving as an executive under codes of conduct, it wasn't just nine to five when I was in the office, it was all the time. And we are all the time city councillors, whether we're on Facebook, on the street, or sitting here in the chambers. So, I would like to see us adopt this rule, and we understand that we can't enforce the rules like the law, and half the time, we're not enforcing our laws, if you want to make a point to that effect. But I don't think it means we shouldn't make rules that are for the good of the body and the good of the people that we serve in the community. And I think the way we put ourselves forth out on social media is part of that reputation. So, I would urge my fellow councillors to vote in favor of this rule. Thank you.
All right. Councillor Jordane, and then, is your hand up? Oh, okay, sorry. Councillor Jordane?
Yeah, essentially, and I, I've listened, and I've heard the comment made, well, we can't control what everybody does, and, and that's true, no question about it, and there's a great number of things that go on on social media that I'm not a particular fan of, but there is one set of people, the thirteen of us can control the thirteen of us, and we should control our own conduct in and out of the room. And when you're on social media and you're blasting your colleagues, or ridiculing your colleagues, and making these kind of other statements on social media, and then you walk in and say, oh my goodness, why, I'm offended, so-and-so, you know, is saying X, Y, Z, or so-and-so is not treating me well, or, you know, this whole, it's just so hypocritical. And it's about time that people be cognizant of their behavior outside the room, as well as in the room. So, if we're gonna get to this, you know, um, view of it's either no-holds-barred, that's one end of the pendulum, I hope we don't go to that, or it's police yourself, just be nice, you know, be respectful, make your points, and do that on social media too, if it's a legitimate thing, but, you know, calling people different names, or ridiculing people, and doing this kind of stuff on social media, we really can do without that. And, yeah, there's plenty of citizens that are more than happy to join in that conversation with you and ridicule the hell out of people in this room, okay? Probably to the point we'll get at some point, people will not want to serve on the city council. That's already a problem, um, in my opinion. So, you know, we've, we've heard so much about, you know, this group needs protection, and that group needs protection, and, and such. We need to follow some of those to ourselves in and out of the chambers. So, I would ask everybody be considerate of that. I think this rule speaks to that. It just basically says, what we do here, we do, including on social media, because it's setting the tone for the meetings in the future. This, to me, seems like a no-brainer rule. I think it's something we should all be able to be embraced, and believe me, there will be plenty of people who will be more than happy to take up the mantle of ridicule and mockery on your behalf, who are enemies of mine, or enemies of yours, and everybody has their camps, and will be more than happy to do plenty of mockery and ridicule for all of us. So, um, by all means, I would encourage you to adopt this rule. I think it makes all the world in the sense, and to, to not pass this rule essentially is creating a no-holds environment, which is basically you're saying that you yourself feel it's okay to go and on social media and start blasting people and, uh, your colleagues, and just imagine what kind of environment that creates. So, it's, it's gonna circle the drain from there. Let's just leave it at that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor Devine, then Rivera, then Greeney?
The only comments I had at that meeting were, I hate to tell you, but this is America, and we have freedom of speech, even on social media. I'm not saying you should do it, I'm just saying, you know, you have the right to do it. And if it's done, what is the penalty? What is the punishment if you say something that somebody doesn't like? So, I just think it's a freedom of speech issue, and there's no punishment attached.
Thank you. Councillor Rivera, and then councillor Greeney?
Thank you. Um, I think for me, it's, it's a little bit of an overreach, and again, the, the, the freedom of speech piece, the piece of, how are we gonna police this? What are we gonna, uh, give you two infringement, and then you get removed from your seat because of something that may have offended someone? Doesn't necessarily have to be how it was written. It could also be how it's in, uh, what the potential intentions were, you know what I mean? Like, it, there's, there's a deeper hole that you can go down with regards to like, how you interpret certain things that are said. Plus, I think, and we would be the only place where you work at, that they would police what you say on Facebook to the extent. There are people that are complaining all the time on Facebook about their bosses, or complaining about where they work on a regular basis. Are they getting fired for that? I don't think it's legal to do that. It, it's legal for you to not hire someone because of what their Facebook looks like, but not because of what they're stating with regards to their opinions. I think that it's, it's also a little hypocritical to come now and state this, when a couple of years ago, and I would say from my own experience, I got a couple lawn signs stolen, and they, they wrote racial slurs in regards to my, my election and where I was running, and nobody said anything about any of this stuff. And, and I understand it's not necessarily social media, but it's still people that are potentially running or being- are potentially running or being scared into not running if we're gonna be talking about that, right? And I think that even being in this body right now makes me feel like I might not wanna run again because of the tension within the body. So social media is a piece of it. Like, the tension within the body is much worse than social media. So I like, it's, I think it's hypocritical to say that and it doesn't make sense. Like, we don't even respect each other when people are talking. So it, it's much larger than just social media. We gotta get past that. Thank you.
It's ten sixteen, so, I don't know.
Motion to adjourn?
Second, second.
Oh, motion to adjourn, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.